Okay, we have lights. We just need Shanay. She's waiting to get copies of the letter. Okay. Shanay, we ready to rock and roll?
Yeah, let me get mine.
Just let me know. Don't worry about it. Okay. We'll go ahead and call the work session together for Thursday, October 3rd, 2024. And the first item on our agenda is the citizens' comments. Shanay, do we have anyone wishing to speak this afternoon?
We do. We have Laura Anderson. Citizen comments provide the opportunity for citizens to address items that are listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your comments, and the professional presentation is requested. Ms. Anderson, you want to speak on items four and five?
Yes.
Can you perch the microphone, please?
Yes.
I'm looking to see what...I can see that on item four, you want to speak on which item?
The budget.
Okay. I'm gonna need counsel, recommendation, like legal counsel, as to whether or not budget has anything to do with what you want to speak on. Budget in general?
Laura, these are all minutes of the meeting?
That's right. I'm objecting to the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
Regarding the budget.
Okay. Then stick to the budget, and you've got three minutes on that item.
And then on the other item, it was the work session on September 12th regarding the municipal judges.
Okay.
Okay.
Items four and five, then.
All right. So on item four, I'm speaking for the budget. I'm objecting to any overtime budget of the police that is being used to transport...
Say your name and address.
Sorry. I will. I'm Laura Anderson. I'm a lifelong resident. Moved here, been here since I was 18 years old. And as of September 30th, I'm the former municipal judge. So I'm speaking on the overtime budget for the police since April, I mean, since May 1st. The police chief has been transporting everyone down to Dallas County on overtime, including $90 an hour some officers are getting to transport. When in April, Judge Adams and I magistrated almost 400 people. And on May 1st, it was the decision of the chief, along with the city attorney, that we would no longer magistrate prisoners. So what that does is doesn't allow us to see prisoners and release them from jail. On May 10th, there was a lady that was in jail.
Laura, we need to stick to like the budget.
It is. It's talking about why there's a problem with the budget.
Okay, you're giving a summary. I need to know what is the budget item?
Is this stopping my three minutes?
Yes. So you need to stick to the budget.
I'm talking about the overtime of the police chief.
Keep it to the overtime, then.
Okay. And so on May 10th, there was a lady that wasn't transported because her paperwork wasn't ready. On May 11th, I signed her paperwork. On May 12th, on Mother's Day, I wrote both the chief and the city attorney, telling them that they're breaking the law. The law says in 1517 that you must bring a prisoner before a magistrate without unnecessary delay, but no later than 48 hours. The lady stayed in jail for 63 hours. And when I wrote a letter to both of them on Wednesday, they got a call from City Hall to the city manager to not discuss how many... how much money is being spent in filling up the Dallas County Jail. You know that Dallas County is full, 98% full. And since we haven't been able to magistrate because of the police chief, over 150 more people are being sent to Dallas County at our expense. And so I am again objecting to the budget. The chief spoke yesterday. He said that he didn't tell us we couldn't magistrate. But on May 1st, judge called over for the paperwork, and he was denied the paperwork, and we've been denied the paperwork ever since. Since May 1st, we have signed 2,000 transfer warrants.
Three minutes. Move on to your next topic, please.
Okay. My next topic is the selection of judges. Since that May 12th, I've been targeted. Not only have I been targeted, Judge Adams has been targeted. Again, for those of you, since I only have three minutes, if you are interested in knowing why 63 years of legal experience was replaced with the city of Dallas judge, I would ask you to come out to Plymouth Park Methodist Church on Sunday, October 6th, and you'll be able to hear the full story of what happened in that. Also, I'll be here tonight to talk as well. And so, gentlemen, what I want to tell you is, in court, I talked to girls 13 who are in jail for fighting. And I tell them, it's very important to say, who's saying it and why are they saying that to me? So I give them the example that they're coming before me, and they're telling me that you are the worst judge ever. And so I tell them just to think about that. Who's saying it? A 13-year-old girl doesn't know many judges. And then I say, why are they saying that to me? It's because they're trying to make me angry. And so what am I gonna do? I'm gonna do the opposite. But if Judge Adams, the municipal judge of the year, tells you, tells me I'm the worst judge ever, I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm gonna say, who's saying it? Judge Adams, the person that was the judge of the year that got robbed of his retirement by the city attorney by not being appointed. And then I would say...
Please don't make accusations, Laura.
Is that taking up my time as well?
Well, it's not professional. Keep it professional.
And so I would say, who's saying it and why are they saying that to me? Gentlemen, you listened to the 13-year-old girl instead of listening to the judge. He had no part of selecting the judge. And so it is completely wrong what occurred. So again, if you want to know what really occurred, ask Judge Adams, because he had no part in the selection of the judge. But you know who did? The same people who complained about me on May 16th. That's the police chief, the city attorney, the assistant city manager, the court director, all complaining about me. I have not received any of those allegations. If you're gonna complain against a judge...
Six minutes.
You need to go through the Commission on Judicial Conduct.
Thank you.
Shanay, do we have any other speakers? Okay. The next item on our agenda is the city operations update. Chris?
Mayor Council, we have Last Month on ICTN with April.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April Riley, Director of Communications. Thrilled to present to you September's video highlights on Last Month on ICTN.
Your ICTN team produced 39 videos in the month of September.
I'm really excited, and I hope the community is too.
It makes me feel safe.
Look, this is my home.
It's Martha's blood, sweat, tears, and money going into this home.
It's really to bring awareness to the local animal shelters here in Irving, and we're trying to save as many dogs as possible.
We have new lighting on both of the stages that are now both LED, which is gonna save a whole lot on our electric bill. And it's a lot more bells and whistles for our clients to use.
By the way, Victor Conley, Chief, is a veteran.
If he does win, I'll hear about this over the next year. That's why I have to cheat.
Exactly what goes on in this show that's set in the 1930s happens in someone's Instagram DMs or comment threads every day.
This is a great opportunity for the community to get together, and our donors love it. I mean, everybody is very generous with their pocketbooks.
We are on location in beautiful Charleston, South Carolina for this special edition of City Source.
I was gonna try to keep up with the lady that was first, but she was so fast.
Hey, keep going. Don't ever stop.
Sweetness is a nine-month-old domestic short-haired tabby cat. She actually came to us through our TNR program, but ended up being very sweet and not feral at all.
I think it's good to have all the kids out here socializing, all being here for the same reason. It's a really good family event.
Since 1982, it's been ICTN and the Irving Independent School District joining together for the game of the week, high school football.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving.
Thank you.
All right. I've got proclamation for the customer service week. So if I could get the directors to meet me up at the front, we'll issue the proclamation. Come on up here, guys. When it comes to customer service, you can see what we have here today with us is our part of the team of people that work day in and day out to make sure that our residents and the customers that we serve have the services that they need. So I have proclamation, whereas customer service is the essential component to maintaining a thriving and prosperous community, and the city of Irving is dedicated to providing exceptional service to all its residents, businesses, and visitors through Survey Irving with Pride Customer Service Program. And whereas the city of Irving's employees and customer service representatives exemplify excellence to their commitment, dedication, and professionalism, ensuring the needs of the community are met with courtesy, respect, efficiency. And whereas Customer Service Week is a national celebration held annually during the first full week of October that recognizes the people who serve and support customers daily. And whereas Team Service is the theme of Customer Service Week 2024, reflecting the vital teamwork and collaboration that enhances our ability to deliver top-quality services to the people of Irving. And whereas this recognition provides the opportunity for all of us to acknowledge the hard work, dedication, and positive impact of our customer service professionals who play a pivotal role in making Irving a great place to live, work, and visit. Now, therefore, I, Rick Snow, for Mayor of the City of Irving and the Irving City Council, to hereby proclaim October 7th, 2027 through October 11th, 2027, as Customer Service Week in Irving, Texas.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Council, as well, for your support of this great team and all 2,500 employees that we have. I know each and every week, you as a council receive in your packets an update on compliments that we get as a city. Those come in very regularly, and that's what our employees are doing each and every day. And many of those great works and great accomplishments, we may not even get a note from. And we definitely appreciate those that we do get a note from. But each and every day, our employees are going out there to positively impact all of our residents. And they're led by an incredible leadership team that you see all in front of you. So my thanks, not only to all of our employees, but to the great leadership team that we have here. You guys set the standard. You guys set the mark and the high benchmark for customer service. So thank you very much for all that you do and doing a great job for our residents. Thank you.
Let's get a quick picture, guys. Can we kind of shuffle this way?
Short people in back.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
You know, we're fortunate to have a lot of great people that work for us in the city of Irving. Every once in a while, they face challenges. And this last week, we lost one of our firefighters in a motorcycle accident when he was not on duty, but he will be very much missed. I was gonna ask, I'm asking the chief to please give us a little bit of detail on the position he held and how long he'd been with us and the services that they're gonna be coming forward. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, management. I want to give you a brief update. I went and visited with Josh Brandeis. Many of you may have crossed paths with him in the past. He put on several... He put on several Citizens Fire Academy classes before he went from prevention over to suppression several years ago. Most recently, he is a driver with the Irving Fire Department and a paramedic. On Tuesday, he was, just recently had lunch with his mother, and he had left there, and several vehicles in front of him stopped, one of them being a trailer that he clipped, suffered severe trauma to his leg, flipped him off his bike in front of an oncoming car that hit him. There was a firefighter three cars back from Weatherford that jumped out, put a tourniquet on his leg, started CPR. So he had the best that we had to offer to try to save his life, but the Lord saw better to take him on to heaven. And so, since that time, you know, Parker County showed up, and I want to tip my hat to Parker County ESD. They showed up on scene along with Decatur Police Department. He is also a police officer. Chief Miller, believe it or not, we can cross over at times and love on each other. And so, he was a police officer for Decatur. He worked for the Decatur School District as a resource officer when he was not here as a firefighter, helping the citizens of Irving. So you can see where his heart was. He was also a big servant in his church, and that's saving grace for his family. They're all dedicated Christians. They're, they attend church regularly. They're very active in their church, so they take some comfort in knowing through their faith where he has gone. Now then, Driver Brandez, since that time, Parker County escorted the body straight to the ME, escorted by 20 to 25 police officers from several cities in that area. Every crossroad was blocked. Showed great respect to him as he was transported to the ME. Since that time, Irving Fire Department took command of the body. The body will not be alone all the way until the service on Monday at 11 o'clock. The services, if you want the services, I can get them pushed out maybe. I know it's in Paradise, Texas, Church in Paradise, Texas. It's 11 o'clock on Monday. His body right now is at a funeral home in Decatur. I just recently had that sent to me. It's at Hawkins Funeral Home in Decatur. I believe the viewing starts at 5:00 on Sunday night, and like I said, the services start the next day at 11:00 at Paradise Baptist Church. It's impressive to see the brotherhood of both blue and red surround him and his family. Of course, his family, like I said, I just got through visiting with his wife and his mother this morning. It's a conversation nobody wants to have, I promise you. It's the toughest conversation I've ever had, sit there and talk to the wife and mother that's in mourning. But we shared a lot of good stories on Josh. I was very close to Josh. It's like I told his wife, I said, he's one of the few that I thought so much of that I hired him twice, because I hired him in prevention, and then when he went to suppression, I hired him again. He's that good of a guy. He's very personable, very outgoing. He would do anything for his community, and he proved that, not only by what, how he talked and carried himself, but also in the actions that he did. So, does that answer your question, Mayor? Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to share Josh with you all.
The next item on our agenda is the regular agenda. I'll go ahead and move through that. Items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are minutes for the 5th, the 9th, and the 12th.
So move, passage.
Item number 7 is a resolution adopting consolidated schedule of fees for code enforcement, park, and recreation, and municipal courts. Item number 8 is a resolution approving addendum number 2 to the agreement with Bracewell LLP for continued legal services in connection with the entertainment center and comptroller litigation. Item number 9 is approving release and settlement agreement with Christian Lopez Moreno in the amount of $190,000 for settlement of a personal injury lawsuit. Number 10 is a resolution approving regional assert transfer addendum to the local administrative agreement between the City of Irving and the City of North Richmond Hills for the purpose of transferring of assets to assets of the North Texas Anti-Gang Center Task Force. Item number 11 is a resolution approving agreement with the Office of the Governor, Texas Homeland Security State Administrative Agency to receive and participate in the fiscal year 2024 Homeland Security Grant Program, authorizing the city manager to execute any necessary documents related to the grant for the police department introduction trailer project. Item 12 is also in agreement with the governor's office to allow the city manager to execute any necessary documents related to the grant with the police department's SWAT headset Item number 13 is also a resolution agreement with the governor's office for the city manager to execute any necessary documents related to the grants for the fire department's ASMET project. Item 14 is also in agreement with the governor's office for the city manager to execute any necessary documents related to the grant for the police department's traffic camera Item 15 is also in agreement with the governor's office and Homeland Security State Administrative Assistance for the city manager to execute any necessary documents related to grant for the police department's planning enhancement project. Item 16 is approving of spending the total amount of $57,570.10 for the purchase of advertising to run in various tourism publications by AJR Media Group. It's for the ICVB. The item number 17 is approving an agreement amended and extension to the contract with Dallas Area Agency on Aging for the 2025 for reimbursement expenses related to the Congregant Meals Program in the amount not to exceed $86,894.40. Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing the taking of bids for the sale of approximately 1.52 acres of vacant commercial land located at 3306 West Shady Grove Road and 45 Fretness Item number 19 is accepting the Irving Economic Development Strategy Plan for the 2025-2030 engagement. Item number 20 is approving an extension of the Economic Development incentive agreement through the Quarter Enhancement Incentive Program with Momens Investment, Inc., on property located at 642 East Second Street. Item 21 is... Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, I think we've had some good success with this sort of a program, but I also think to look to other areas of the city, like, for instance, I'll just use one, for instance, Valley Ranch. Everybody thinks of it as new. It's 40 years old, I think, was the recent last year's anniversary, and so I think we can get a lot of bang for the buck with some facade improvements and various things. Where you're seeing a lot of those buildings, to me, are getting a little more tired and older, but all throughout town, I think there's areas that could benefit.
Yeah, I think we've had pretty good luck with those facade enhancements and stuff. It's really made a difference, especially in the downtown area. Item number, let's see, that was 20, let's go to 21. Item 21 is approving the first amended development agreement as, with Lai Lone Oak Residential LLC authorizing the city manager or his designated to execute amended agreement and provide a servability clause. 22 is approving an interlocal agreement with North Central Texas Council of Governments in the amount of $19,878.90 to provide the 2025 digital orthographic and LiDAR. 23 are the bids, 23 through 32. Are there any questions on the bids? No questions? We'll go to number 33, which is repealing section 12 through 7 and 12 through 8 and amending section 12 through 9 of Chapter 12 entitled Municipal Courts of Record of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances to repeal certain fees that are established by resolution. Brad?
Yeah, just a quick question. My understanding is what we're doing here is not, we're kind of reducing duplicates is what we're doing.
Lauren Hale, Strategic Services Senior Manager. Yes, we are basically taking the fees that are in the ordinances and moving them to the consolidated fee schedule. And in the 86th legislature, the state actually adopted the fees that we use for municipal court in the state legislature, so we don't have to have them in our ordinance.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Item number 34 is an ordinance pending section D103-4 entitled Dead Ends of Section 17 through 4 of the Irving Land Development Code related to cul-de-sacs on fire apparatus assessed roads. Access roads. Yes, sir.
Could I ask, Chief, are you here? Ben Beckner? If I could, just ask you to, because it's something we've talked about in the past with the, with the new equipment and the cul-de-sacs, and so you kind of would enlighten us a little bit how that looks.
Victor Conley, Fire Chief. Councilman Zapata, this is an item we've brought forth several times, and what we're trying to do here is make it better on the, some of the builders coming into our town that the cul-de-sacs that are currently required in the fire code is 96 feet, and they're allowed to park all the way around on both sides. So you're basically cutting off 16 feet, making it 80 feet. And so what we've done is we've gone back, and when we don't have restrictions to the cul-de-sac, meaning it's straight, straight shot to the cul-de-sac, we've doubled that length to allow them to reduce the cul-de-sac and reduce their costs and give some savings and open up some other opportunities in the area. So, having said that, that's only for residential areas. For commercial or mixed use, it's still 96 feet because we will have multiple pieces of equipment trying to get there for whatever emergency. This is only for residential, and I think it's, I think it's a good fit for economic development and still meets our needs as a fire department.
Great, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Number 35 is amending Chapter 22 entitled Noise of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances. Item number 36 is amending ordinance number 223-10-800 by approximately, by approving a schedule and classification personnel for a fire department. 37 is an ordinance accepting bid in the amount of $350,007 by Shalom Services Corporation for the sale of tax-foreclosed property located at 2720 Proctor Street. And that brings us to our zoning cases.
Mayor, could I ask?
Sure.
On 37?
You assure the mayor.
I'm trying to understand that the money that we basically are, is being sold, the property is being sold, but it's being applied to other entities that are owed tax. So, Pat, if you could kind of put a light on that for me?
Yes, sir. Pat Lamer is Director of CIP Department. Councilman Zapata, this was a tax-foreclosed property that the City of Irving became a trustee of the property, so we were able to take bids on this property, and, and the outstanding taxes was $339,000. So, part of that $339 comes to the city, the other taxing agencies get their piece of it, and then the remainder would come to the city.
How much is coming back to the city, if I may ask?
I don't know that offhand. I can get that for you.
Yeah, I'd be curious, because, you know, it's nice the other agencies are getting their piece, but it'd be interesting to find out how that breaks out.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get the difference between the $339 and $350. That will definitely come to the city, but part of that $339 is also taxes due to the city that we will also get a portion. That's, that's what I don't know, is what the city's portion was of the taxes.
Okay. When you get a chance.
I'll get that for you.
Chris?
Thank you. Now, all things being equal, the city's about 25% of the total tax bill. We'll get you the exact number, but...
I was really looking for how much other entities were getting.
We will not be the largest, no.
Okay.
I'm sure the schools are in there. Schools are in there. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Jocelyn Murphy, Director of Planning. So we don't have any full zoning cases tonight, but we do have four amendments. The first two items are companion items to the cul-de-sac of, that was item number 34 for the fire code. So, item number 39 is to amend the thoroughfare plan in order to add cul-de-sac design standards. So you see in the green box, the traffic department added design standards for whether it was a 150-foot-long segment in the, in a cul-de-sac or less, and therefore, without getting into too much detail, is to, it would determine which cul-de-sac dimension would apply, whether it's the existing 80-foot diameter and 100-foot of rideaway or 96 diameter and 116 feet of rideaway. So that's the first case. And the second case is amending the Unified Development Code, the subdivision ordinance standards, to reflect that the applicable standards would be the previously adopted or the previous thoroughfare plan amendments. So that's basically what we're going to be changing in the Unified Development Code, is just directing people to the new thoroughfare plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay.
Then the, Fernando, do you want to switch these out? I have the other two separate.
That was 38 and 39.
Yeah, he's bringing it up. Here's 40. So 40, these are two items that we've talked about before. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted support on Monday, so these were done just recently. This first amendment is to amend the definition of indoor amusement, to clarify that a private card room is not indoor amusement, and make some other small changes to it, and also to expand the applicability of the conditional use permit to not only single-family districts, but also to all our residential districts. And this is a request for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Therefore, that will apply now to townhouses, multifamily, any other that weren't, quote, "single-family" in the ordinance. So the definition of indoor amusement, again, just kind of clarifying, just cleaning it up a little bit, taking out some of the entry fee and some of the Vent Center language that really isn't necessary, and also, again, adding that a card house is not indoor amusement. And again, for the conditional use permit measurement, it's currently within 500 feet of an R single-family district, and that will expand to within 500 feet of an R residential district. So we did send for both this item and the next item, we sent about 1,900 postcards to people that were within that new 500-foot area, in addition to the area that will be covered by the next amendment. We've actually, I've received two full phone calls about that, so I guess people understood what the, what the request was, but we did not have nearly as many questions as we thought we might. So, again, today, we are just requesting approval of this item. And then the next item.
Mark, did you have?
He was first. John, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, and this is on both 40 and 41.
Sure.
When do, when do these ordinances take effect?
They'd be immediate. They're, ordinances are typically effective immediately upon approval.
Okay, thank you.
Soon as I sign them. Mark?
For the poker houses, I just wanted to be clear that I think there's a real good reason to believe that these poker houses are not actually legal, and I know that there's been some cases talking about that in the courts, and that's still an undecided issue, but these, these are good changes in the event that they are, they could somehow be considered legal. But I don't want to make it sound like that we're agreeing that they're legal at all.
Okay. Any other questions?
Want to go through the next presentation for the card houses? That was, that was the first amendment. Pardon, yes.
Brad, did you have a question on that? Okay. Next, next one, okay.
Okay. I want to make sure we didn't skip this one. I want to make sure we didn't skip this one. So for the next amendment, this is item forty-one. This is for the card house proposal. Currently, indoor amusement regulations, these were adopted just to distinguish the different types of entertainment from each other, and the presumption was that the indoor amusement would be open to the public. However, card houses just typically involve a game of poker, operate differently than indoor amusement. They typically have longer hours, they are normally private, member-only clubs, and they often have higher parking needs. So the proposed amendments are to add a definition of card house and a definition of card game. So a card house basically is within a building where a card, dice, or other similar games of skill or luck are played for money or anything of value in a private place. Patrons are invited for a fee, purchase of membership, access to participate in a game, and no person receives any economic benefit other than personal winnings. And a card game is a game in which a player places a bet on cards held by the player, and except for the advantage of skill or luck, the risks of losing and the chances of winning are the same for all players participating in the game. We would amend the future land... Or the non-residential land use charge to allow card houses only by conditional use permit in the CEC, Community Commercial, and FWY Freeway districts only. The... Each of those individual sections would also... The CC and the freeway would also be amended to reflect that, and we would also show that it'd be prohibited in any other zoning district. So when we use the word prohibited, that means it cannot be requested. The use is not proposed to be permitted in the CN Neighborhood Commercial District where indoor amusements are permitted. We also have... We are proposing several different performance standards. Again, the CUP, the conditional use permit, would be required for operation of a card house only in the CC and the freeway districts. The card houses, again, would be prohibited in any other district, including any zoned as a detailed site plan, which is an SP one, or generalized site plan, SP two, or restaurant with on-premises consumption, which is known as an RAB. The card house would be the only... There would be the singular permitted use of the property with the CUP, and shall not have any other accessory use. So the proposal is to allow the card house only, would not allow any other indoor amusements, restaurant, anything like that. Maximum size, a card house shall not exceed fifteen hundred square feet. We are proposing some separation requirements, would not be located within five hundred feet of a public or private school, religious facility, hospital, or any R-zoned residential district. That's consistent with our on-premises alcohol regulations. Actually, alcohol is three hundred feet, so this is larger than alcohol, which is... We're proposing five hundred feet. We are clarifying the measurement is property line to property line, which is consistent of how we measure alcohol between schools and businesses serving alcohol. And we're also proposing to have a distance separation between card houses of a thousand feet for those which a conditional use permit has been approved. A card house shall comply with chapter forty-seven of the Penal Code. The sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption be prohibited. Any BYOB venues would require... Would have to comply with the new chapter eighteen A the city adopted, and use of gaming machines, computers, or other electronic means of playing a card game would be prohibited. We would clarify the ratio for a card house, but the parking would be one space per a hundred square feet. And again, we did send those notices, about nineteen hundred notices, and we followed all of the new requirements of state statute, and this will be on your agenda tonight for consideration. Be happy to answer any questions.
Al?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I'm trying to reconcile card club versus card house and I think the... And card game. Talk to me about the discussions on that, because it goes to the actual facility that's operating there at one fourteen and MacArthur. I know the chief, and I've had a little bit of talk about it, he may have some light on this one, but I'm kind of trying to understand. I thought when it came before us and we approved it, it was a card club, because that's what it has on the entrance, the door, as to what it is. So I'm trying to understand what we're doing.
The terminologies are probably interchangeable, whether you call it card house, card room, or a club. It has to be a card house, or any type of that activity would have to be operated under a private club per state law. So that's probably where the club terminology comes in.
It doesn't have to be a private club, it just has to occur in a private place.
Say that again, Philip.
It just has to occur in a private place according to the chapter forty-seven of the Penal Code to qualify for the...
Chief, you have some thoughts about this on what we... How will it impact what we've already done at this point, as far as what's there at one fourteen and MacArthur? Because we called it, unless I'm wrong, I thought it was card club.
This ordinance, Councilman, affects only on a go-forward basis. This would not affect the card room that has been previously issued a certificate of occupancy.
Well, I understand that, Philip, but I'm talking about what we named it and what is named in here. There's a third name. I'm trying to reconcile exactly what we're doing as it impacts, because we've got a situation right now that we're dealing with, and if I'm not mistaken, Chief, we talked about the Penal Code and a few other things that were accepted at the time that we thought what we were doing, and now we're finding out differently.
The existing facility there, we've been focused on the activity of the card game itself. All of our enforcement, or I would say, review of the activities going on there is to make sure that the game itself falls within chapter forty-seven with respect to gambling, the act of gambling. With respect to the defense to prosecution, with respect to public place, we have, from an enforcement standpoint, we've been focused on that because they had issued a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, one of the things that I think I approached you on, and you did, and I thought that was exactly right on, is that when we passed that card club, I keep going back to what I remember, unless my memory's failing me at this point, is that there was also passed because of the ability to utilize the back room for fundraising, for Irving Scholarship Fund, et cetera. And if I remember correctly, that you and I talked about that anybody under the age of eighteen could not move through that area because they were violating, and so I'm kind of... I'm having a problem trying to understand what we have there and what we're trying to do here, so.
Yeah, we haven't... I remember the presentation as well about those folks, I mean, when they came and they said they were going to have events there, but we haven't... Our investigation hasn't... We haven't observed... Our officers haven't observed children or people under eighteen in there. Children under eighteen can't gamble, or shouldn't be, you know, gambling, and we haven't observed anything like that. All we've observed is a game, the issuance of a private membership, and then those members being allowed to go to tables to gamble.
I see, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, Emo Penya, that is fellow that's working on this issue at the state level, flew up to... If I could ask him to maybe give us a little insight?
Sure. Why don't we go ahead and let the... See what the questions are, that may help him as to what we're looking.
You may have more insight after the rest of us gets done speaking, but I agree with Mark. I would like a statement in this ordinance that it must comply with the law. Now, maybe that's already in there. I think it's probably assumed, obviously, but it cannot have any legal purpose, because, again, I'm dubious the way I read the statute, how it's in compliance. When you look at restaurants, you look at shops, you look at the variety of things. So whatever, quote, "new ones" go in. Now, I also would like them limited, and I think you've partially done that with the BYOB references, but is that the same as what we would limit a hookah shop hours to or whatever?
Yes, the same regulations would apply.
Okay. Very good on that. I also... I don't... Like, I would like this to apply just citywide with whatever the current one or any other one's going on. So why can't we do that? I know... I think I know what you're going to say, but I'd rather do it anyway.
They are... They would be legal non-conforming. And to answer your question, and I know, I mean, we can probably go into a deeper discussion, but just at a high level, we recognize that there is this issue about the legality. We have never opined as to the legality of this, so just concur with what Councilman Croninwett has stated. The city putting this in place is not an opinion that this is legal. There is a specific provision, and Jocelyn noted it, it's on slide six, that it is required... That their operation is required to comply with all applicable law, including the provisions that are currently on the books in chapter forty-seven of the Penal Code, and certainly that allows us, should the law evolve, or there are different positions taken by the District Attorney's Office, that maybe that influences how we view these types of uses.
If... To me, if it's truly a private game, I started thinking about some of my old apartments. My first one, when I moved to Dallas, was like a... Seemed like I was living in a cardboard box, but about four hundred something square feet, which would be a big, big poker game with a kitchen and a bathroom and bedrooms and all that. It's a fifteen hundred square feet. I know we talked about that last time, but that's a really big private game, and that's why I'm skeptical, like, when I think of this statute, I think of, okay, we're all going to a small table, and people are able to gamble and play cards with each other without fear of being jailed, versus a commercial entity selling memberships and occupying a very public space. And so, again, I continue to question that. Do we have to go back to P and Z if I propose something smaller? So I would propose five hundred square feet if we're just doing the going-forwards. That's still quite a big private game, and this assumes you're... This assumes you're occupying a permanent space, right? We're not talking about homes or something in an impromptu game by somebody. This assumes, if this all is legal, if there is this loophole, then I think five hundred feet, to me, is more than sufficient for a pretty darn big game.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. So just so that I'm completely clear on this, if we were to pass this and the city were to opine on the legality either of any future or the one existing club as regards Penal Code chapter forty-seven, this would not be seen as an admission of legality?
That would be the city's position. Yeah. This, we are creating a category. I mean, so far, at least, the position of the city has been that, you know, we're not opining as to whether their operation is legal, illegal, and there have been some opportunities by the courts and by the AG to weigh in on that. So far, they have declined. I think the way I would answer it, Councilman Block, is should there be a decision or a change in position, then we would be coming back to you all to evaluate the context of any... At this point, we have one operating business, and to talk about what the implications would be for that one operating business. And then certainly, we would evaluate, you know, the continued... Like, this continuing to reside in our zoning ordinance.
Okay, so...
So this was done in response to some particular concerns and issues that were brought to us, and so this is how planning staff has framed the issue, and so we've worked really hard to try to stay within the boundaries of what the law is today.
Okay. So I guess, out of curiosity, if we were to pass item forty-one, or is this forty-one?
Yep.
If we were to pass item forty and not pass item forty-one, am I wrong in thinking that that would have the effect of essentially there would be no legal avenue for a new poker house to come in and request operation?
Yeah, it's... I would say you're correct, and I'll defer to you, because of the whole public-private operation part of it, is that an indoor amusement is a public operation.
Can we answer that more fully in executive session? Because I think you're asking some good questions, and I want us to be careful about what we're putting here in the public record.
Sure, sure. Yeah, let's... If we could add that to when we go into executive, that would be great. I'd love to learn more about that. Thank you.
Brad?
Yeah, I just wanted, speaking of the record, saying more... One more thing. For purposes of a district judge or a court of appeals or the High Court in Austin, I do not believe that these comply with state law, so whatever it is that we do on item forty-one, that's not an indication that we're welcoming these with open arms or that we think they're legal. This is only in response to, if they are legal, this is what we would like to see, or we would like to see a smaller footprint and have some good regulation of them, but for the purpose of the record, to make it very clear, it's... I don't believe that they're legal as they're operating. Maybe we'll see some future ones that would be legal with a private, a truly private game, but our consideration of passing of this would have nothing to say towards that we think this is a good use or that this ought to be what's happening.
Mark?
I have a question. Like, for the one that's currently in operation, there's a... So there was a parking issue there. My understanding is there was a variance given for the parking requirement? Is that right?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't believe so, because it was a large shopping center, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
It was just an RAB? Oh, okay. For commercial businesses that are in a shopping center like that, and I guess they're supposed to take a portion of the parking spaces available there, is that right?
Correct.
What if one business is using too much? Is that a violation of the...
Yeah, that's not uncommon. So the inspections department, if there is a, like a strip center and has a bunch of tenant spaces, they keep up with what that use is and how many parking spaces are taken out of the total. So if there are tenants in all of the spaces and a restaurant wants to come in at the very end of the day, and there are no spaces left, then the owner has to get a variance.
But to your point, Councilman, if there are enough parking spaces in the shopping center to meet the minimums for all the tenants, if one particular tenant happens to generate more traffic than the parking... The minimum parking that they have, we don't have a way of regulating and saying you can't have any more tenants or customers parking the parking lot. That would be up to the property owner to determine allowances among the various tenants.
Okay. I would guess that's a very hard thing then to gauge and try to enforce if there was a problem with that, but kind of like Brad talking about lying eyes early before, you go over there and you can see the spaces are all filled and it's impacting the businesses over there, but I guess the property owner there hasn't made any complaints about that?
Yeah.
Yeah. The property owner has, the owner of the shopping center?
Yeah.
The businesses have, yeah. So are you saying, Shane, that they have to... Those businesses have to take it up with the owner of the strip center first?
Yeah, we don't have anything in... Shane Delar, Code Enforcement Director. We don't have anything in our ordinances that specifically allow us to go into a built facility and begin to regulate how certain spaces are used for certain businesses. That's the property owner's responsibility to either mark or sign specific spaces, or mark or sign specific areas for business uses. There's nothing in our code that allows us to go after the fact. As Jocelyn was describing, the parking counts and the attempt to understand what the total usage would be is done at the development stage and at construction, and then if it's a situation where one business is exceptionally successful and is consuming more of the parking than the others are needing, the property owner would need to step in and manage that somehow.
Thank you.
Something completely off different. Okay, oh, you may shut me down. One of the challenges they're facing is that people come out of the one and stand in front of the other doors to smoke. Do we have a smoking distance? Do we have a smoking distance?
Yes, we do have a smoking distance, and that's something that we could partner with health inspections to, to take a look at and to investigate.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that along. Any other questions of Jocelyn? Al, you had someone join us?
Yeah, I'd like to, Mayor, I think it'd be important to hear from Amel Penya, who is working with, representing to the legislature on what they may be doing in this issue coming up. So, thanks for coming up, Amel. Would you, you've heard a little bit about what we're dealing with now.
Hi, Mayor, how you doing?
Good, good.
Thank you, Al, for having me today. I represent two card rooms in the Houston area, and, you know, this is an up-and-coming industry here in the state, and I was asked to kind of look to see what the best way to do, and how, what the best way was to regulate these things. And right now, in Texas, there's fifty-four ongoing card rooms in the state, and they're large employers, depends on how many tables they have in the, in the room, but they're certainly large employers. And I commend you all for looking at the ordinances on the local level, but I've dealt with these types of issues on the state level before, not local, not just local, but state. And we even had problems regulating air conditioning contractors. And so, when Atlantic Richfield brought me the problem about air conditioning contractors, we decided we were gonna go with a statewide regulation, and that way, there wouldn't be so many small licenses from the municipalities and so forth that you'd have to be compliant to, which only makes sense. But we didn't touch the, the local ordinances either. So, if you wanted to stay local, you can. If you wanted to go state, you can. And so, I proposed that to the, to the legislature today, and I've gotten sponsors already in Austin, they're from different parts of the state, but they're gonna run again with the legislation that happened last session, that got through the House. And then, you know, the blockage is in the Senate, and I'm working on that to make sure that the Senate, you know, hopefully sees this favorably, and they've only been trying to do this, Mayor, for the last eight years. So, I mean, it's not a new issue, but I think for the solutions, and it's gonna be very difficult to, to put the toothpaste back in the tube, now that there's that many. And I've been talking, Philip, I've been talking to the district attorneys around the state as well, and the DA's also wanna have some definition to, you know, what the next steps would be. And so, somebody mentioned that the Attorney General had not wanted to touch this, and that's right, they're gonna leave it back up to the legislature. And that's where I am, is going back to the legislature, and it'll probably be put under the licensing bureau agency there in Austin. And that's kind of like the catch-all agency, they regulate boxing, air conditioning contractors, cosmetology, it's kind of a catch-all agency, but, so this would actually fit in that. The good news about all of this is, again, that they can come back in with different regulations for not only the card rooms, and I would ask you to take a look at card dealers as well, not just the rooms, but the dealers. And so, the, that's, that's very important, to make sure that you've got background checks and so forth with that, and, you know, training, and insurance, all the other different items that make in a very positive business, that's controlled, Mayor, would be, that's the stuff that we're gonna be looking at in January in, in Austin. On the professional side, again, I've even gotten interest and have a relationship now with ADP. And ADP is one of the biggest, you know, business organizers in the country, and they're looking at this from the services to, from the dealers as independent contractors, to the actual card rooms themselves, to be compliant, you know, for taxes and everything else. So, when you start getting it serious, like, when you get attention from ADP, compliance is one of those key, key things, as well as vetting the dealers. And so, that's important to the card room owners, is making sure that, that you've got reliable people that are, that are working the rooms around the state. So, that's, I mean, it's complicated, but it's not. If you've done it before, you know the way the state operates, is that that agency, on the regulatory side, looks to have the industry participants come in and telling them, am I over-regulating, or am I under-regulating? Don't let me get too far on either side, and then get the input from that. And of course, the card rooms, the dealers, and so forth, I mean, they, they want to come in and say, this is the kind of training that we need, that we want out of this. So, because of ADP, ADP is a nationwide organization, nationwide company, they like that, because we become, all of a sudden, the leaders, you know, the model for other states as well, to say, okay, if we're gonna have card rooms, or the card rooms are already in existence, like what Texas has today, then you at least ought to have these parameters. And that's, that's what we're striving for in January. Oh, one last item, because General Saponta and I have been talking about this, is there's gotta be some sort of coordination between, you know, Irving and Webster, for example, that came up with their own ordinance, so we don't have a plethora of ordinances running around. And the best place that I've found professionally over the years, the decades, the centuries that I've been working in Austin, is to look at the Texas Municipal League as a possible place to go and discuss this, so that nobody gets too far out of bounds on the size of the rooms and all of this, you know, I mean, that's, try to have some consistency between the cities, between the municipalities, and TML is, is the place that I've always gone, or that the government has always gone, for that type of coordination. So, I would recommend, that's, that's a really positive thing to do, is to talk to them.
All right.
Any, any questions?
Thank you, thank you for, for being with us today, and we'll take those things into consideration. That brings us to Item number forty-two, which is appointment, so we've got someone ready.
Yeah, I wanted, if I could back to Number thirty-seven?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't speak up before, but on thirty-seven, the tax foreclosure, just, that case brought a few questions to my mind, so I wanted to mention that, for one thing, so we're looking at the property, the tax debt being three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and that's the total tax, that's the total tax liability for that property? And it's being sold for three fifty, is that right?
Correct, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand is the, is the tax due.
Okay, so, so all the taxes that are owed will be paid by all, by all the different taxing entities?
Correct. And while we're talking about this, I did get some information on the breakdown, as far as what the city will net, the city will net about ninety-three thousand dollars, so eleven thousand dollars difference between three thirty-nine and three fifty, plus about eighty-two thousand dollars that was overdue tax for the city, so the city will net about ninety-three thousand dollars.
So, seeing that the tax debt was getting very close to the market value of the property, maybe question, are we getting ahead of these fast enough? Because if we, if we're too slow on these, then obviously, the tax debt keeps growing, and then, then you get to the point where the market value doesn't actually satisfy the tax liability, and then we're losing money that way. And so, I don't know what that process is, so I'd like to, at some point, hear something, a discussion about what our process is for, when we start pursuing those tax liabilities.
Yeah, in this particular case, there was an interest in this property, so we, we put it out for bid. Some of these properties, there's just no interest in, in, no demand for them, but this one, there was, and that's why we put it out for bid.
All right, thanks.
All right. That brings us to the end of our review of the agenda, and brings us to Item number four, which is multi-family program changes.
Can I say one thing on the last one?
Sure.
Item forty-two, so, if you read through all the materials, the, it's significantly changed this year, as far as who we can ask to be appointed to
Oh, yeah.
Dallas County Central Appraisal District. So, we, in theory, could nominate up to five. We've nominated one, which is William David Palmer, who I think could do a great job at this. And looking through the deadlines, I think December is when the, the actual election will be, and so, there may be some needed coordination, because as you can see in our packet, we have a hundred and fifty votes, which will not get us anybody elected. However, if the various ISDs and cities, if a certain amount of them decided there's a likable candidate, whether that be theirs or ours, that's something to consider, and so maybe you and I could speak about pushing that forward, assuming we're not violating anything, KO, but I really think it's important for our area, our school districts, our cities over here, to have somebody on that board, and I don't remember the last time we did anyway, but this may actually be an opportunity for us to get somebody on the board.
Yeah, I think if, if we can do that, I was thinking about the same thing, that we really need to get with some of the other entities, and see if, if we can put together a coalition that feels comfortable with, with David, and we can move it forward. We don't have a problem with that, do we, KO? Okay. All right. Shane? Multi-family programs.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Shane Diller, your Code Enforcement Director, the presentation here is gonna review proposed changes to our multi-family risk rating program. The program is established through our code, and all of our apartment complexes and fourplexes are inspected annually, and the inspection results in a risk rating. Currently, our program has four levels of risk rating that an inspected complex, or inspected multi, or fourplex could land in. The system is a demerit-style system, so as the inspectors find issues, points accrue, and as those points mount, they go from Level One, which is the, the highest level, the best of the ratings, to Level Four. And then, the factors that go into the inspections that get, and then get baked into the rating are everything from inadequate maintenance to fire and life safety issues, such as exposed wiring and fire alarm, or fire suppression system issues, complaints that we receive and sustain throughout the year are included in the scoring, and then maintenance incidents that occur, if there's sewage overflows, if there's issues of heating or air conditioning going out of the complexes, those get baked into the scores as well. What we're looking to do through the improvements we're proposing is create a system that categorizes the condition of the apartments in the fourplexes in as accurate a way as possible, and it, it accomplishes some improvements that are driven by the fact that our housing stock in the multi-family realm continues to age. We're looking for cleaner, safer, and healthier housing. We're also looking for blight-free conditions at the exteriors of these properties, and then, we're always striving for swift and effective response to complaints that we receive from the tenants and to management from these complexes. The new system would go from having four levels of risk rating to five levels of risk rating. So, right now, we have four being our above-average, the new would have one being our excellent, or, I'm sorry, one was, is our current above-average, one, the new one would be our excellent. These would be typically newer and impeccably maintained and managed properties. The new system would have a Level Two, which are the above-average properties. That's where there's onsite maintenance, there's few complaints to us that we've sustained, and they have clean exteriors as we perform exterior inspections. The Level Three is where a good bulk of them are gonna land, and that's in the average category. There would be a low number of maintenance incidents, there would be a moderate level of complaints, and a low number of failed exterior inspections. The Level Four, below average, where right now, the Level Four is our basement, that's the bottom of the scale, would have a high number of incidents, a high complaint volume, and failed exterior inspections, but not to the level that would trigger the new Level Five, where it's an unacceptable level of concern at the properties. Our current Level Four, and our new level, proposed Level Five, is what triggers additional code requirements to be constructed at multi-family communities. It could trigger legal action regarding nuisance suits and various issues. So, the new, the current Level Four, which we don't have any of, would be the new Level Five. So, to give you an example of how the change would affect our, our multi-family housing stock, under the current system right now, we have a hundred and twenty-nine apartments that are Level One apartments, and under the new system, we would have only forty-eight of those. And you can see how that trickles down to each of these, to where the vast majority of our complexes would be in the Level Two and Level Three category realm, and we don't have anything in our current housing stock that, as we looked at last year's inspection reports, and applied this new system to them, would push any of the complexes immediately into a Level Five, or a, a legally tenuous situation where they'd be required to make code upgrades, or be facing legal challenge. But there would be some that would move into the Level Four category, or to, that would still be at that cusp, but that would be working with hard, that's, those are currently our Level Threes, that we have been engaged in our Level Three improvement program with, and working harder with those to try to get improvements there. This same strategy would fall over to our fourplexes as well, so when you follow in there, we have a hundred and forty current fourplexes that are in the Level One category, and that would drop to forty-one, and then you see that we would have the bulk of them land in the, the Level Two and the Level Three categories. We feel as though this approach best captures an accurate assessment of what we've got currently in our multi-family housing stock, and gives us good information as to where we need to be putting efforts in regards to communication with management and, and inspection practices. There are some programmatic enhancements that go along with this as well. With the approval of the additional staffing that we got this year, we're beginning quarterly exterior inspections in the multi-family complexes, and so we'll have that baked into the risk rating that we were just talking about. We've got what we're calling a management training incentive. As we're obviously reworking this, so that the grading is a little stricter, there's an opportunity for management in these complexes and ownership to claim back some credit in the scoring system by participating in training programs. These are classes that we've talked to Jason Simon and the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas on partnering with us with, they're a good conduit to the membership there, and we would have things like Code Enforcement 101, teaching them what we're looking for, and how our processes work. We've talked to the Police Department about partnering on crime prevention strategies in apartment complexes and multi-family communities, best management practices that the AAGD already has set up, that they could push more out to their, to their membership, that would give them credit there, and then partnering with the Fire Department on fire prevention and complex safety issues that fall in their purview, and in the inspection arena that they perform at these complexes. We would also include certain fire code violations in our risk rating scoring annually, which is not something we've done until now, but we think is a good partnership with the Fire Department, and a more holistic approach to rating the risk in our complexes. So, what we expect out of these changes is improvement in property conditions. We're hoping that we're able to communicate better, and that we're able to engage more, and that the conditions of living for our multi-family communities improve. We think that it provides better insight and a better way to assess, as our people are looking at the complexes, and then, we're excited about improved partnerships with the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and the association, as we stress a broader assistance to our apartment community through the different departments working together. There's an outreach component, a component of this, of course, we wanna make sure that the apartment management folks understand how we're changing the risk rating, if this should be approved. That's gonna go directly from the inspectors, and the good relationships they generally have with the managers and their portfolio. It'll go directly to the property owners and managers through an email and letter from the department as well, and then it'll go directly to the membership that attend the stakeholder meetings through AAGD, and our continued engagement and attendance at meetings with the association there. And then, indirectly, we'll work with communications for social media and website updates, to make sure the message is getting out as many ways as we can possibly get it out. If there's consensus to these concepts here, we would need to amend the ordinance in a few minor ways, simply referencing the correct score numbers, changing fours to fives and various things, and we would have that back to you by the end of the calendar year, that we need to take effect for the scoring systems that would start January first, with our next calendar... to take effect for the scoring systems that would start January 1st with our next calendar year rating inspections. With that, I'm available for questions.
Questions. John?
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, great work. I like the approach. I like the direction. I think overall, you know, I'm for this. My one addition, and I don't know how feasible this is, so you know, this is just me kind of brain dumping, but one of the things that I hear the most about, you know, problems that people have with apartments
Sure.
is the effects on surrounding neighborhoods and the parking situation. So I understand we have our zoning, or our unified development code has parking requirements and minimums and all of that. I get it. I'm not, I understand we can't just retroactively go back and say, you don't have enough parking. Is there any way that we could factor that into the score, though, where you have an apartment complex that's not providing adequate parking to the residents in the complex? I understand that that would, you know, that gets into the question of, okay, well, first of all, how do you measure that? And how do you, you know, how do you adequately figure out, you know, whether they are and all that? But just, that was kind of the one thought I had as far as like, if there was one thing I could add to this, it would probably be that. But I don't know how feasible that even is.
I'm not sure of the way our, all of our ordinances broadly with parking on city streets and then the complexes, how our ordinance are currently drafted, what our path forward there would be. I think that's something that, and we've heard those concerns as well, that even though adequate parking sometimes is provided, the residents choose to park in different ways so that it's not used by them and then it impacts areas. I think it's something we're certainly taking a look at already as we look at parking in general. I'm not sure that it's anything we'd be able to address through an ordinance that with language I can think of right now, but it's certainly something we can keep on our radar as we look at the way we approach our work in this way and our partnerships with the police department, parking enforcement and various things, and see if there's ever a path we find there that can address that. We'd certainly keep it on our radar.
Okay. Thank you.
Abdul?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Shane. I really appreciate the presentation. I would like to share my observation in my district. There are dozens and dozens of apartment complexes in our district, and some of them are in a very bad condition. And I'm sure this ordinance will help in improving the quality of the maintenance and the upkeeps. And this will definitely helps in improving the quality of life of residents. So this is a good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, this combined, this is a direct result in the staffing that was approved in this fiscal year. We're able to turn around and look at improvements like this to be able to address situations just like that.
Any other questions? Shane, I just commented that working with the apartment association, I think, helps a lot. I think the majority of them want to weed out the bad guys and they want to keep their reputation for the amount of apartments we have in here. So when you look at those numbers, we've got like 300 and some apartments and 160-some. I like hear the same complaints like John, that the parking is an issue. I don't know if there's something maybe we can discuss and I can, I had the chance to be with a couple of different meetings with the apartment association to where maybe they've got to get a sticker that the apartment complex requires for them to have on their vehicle to have it in. I don't know if that, you know, that's a lot of legwork, but I mean, renting an apartment today is a whole different thing than it used to be when I was younger. I mean, a lot of them are even requiring the DNA of your dog so that they know that, you know, if there's something left out there and it's your dog, that's, you know, it's like a $2,500 fine. So there's just a lot of things that you pay upfront that you never used to, and there's a lot that you go through. So maybe allowing two stickers per unit or something, or three based, or a number of stickers based on the rooms might be something. I'll visit with Jason about that to see, because then he can find out the cars that are sitting outside that really need to be inside and something of that nature. The other thing is, and I think this is going to be a tough one to regulate, but there's a lot based upon smells. I went to one the other day and it was just staunch, staunch, staunch with weed. I mean, you could walk in down the street, one of our main streets that was, you could smell it. I mean, you couldn't tell where it was coming from because I think it came from everywhere. And so I think that's another issue that's really gotten out of hand with one of the complexes. I've got two people that live over at the Grand V so that invite me over about once every two months to smell the, as they're walking over to the cafe, they seem to have a challenge in that area. So I don't know if there's anything we can do in that arena either, but those are the two complaints that I get is cars and the smells. But otherwise, I think you all have done a pretty good job of, the programs we put in place a while back were cut the bushes down so they weren't higher than the windows and, you know, irrigating things and doing things like that just to help prevent the theft and things of that made a big difference. So I think you're always on the right track. Brad?
So Shane's always very quick on those. I was thinking of you when we were talking about customer service earlier, just
Thank you.
being very responsive, which I know people have appreciated. But when you go in or you receive evidence about something, can that change their score, the apartments?
Yes, the scores won't change because the scores are tied to their annual inspection and then the information we gather throughout the year so that then, as they pay their new license fee and reregister with us annually through their licensing, the score is baked into those processes. So a couple of years ago, we amended the fee schedule so that if a complex is performing worse than others, they end up paying a higher fee. And that information does get baked into that risk rating. We're not able to ding them immediately upon inspection, but we track that and that then mounts as a demerit, if you will, in their score with the next time they receive their licensing and their fees are calculated. And they would feel the pinch then if they were excessively poor in that realm.
Yeah, Brad, recently, you and I were copied on a person who had a big hole in their ceiling, so, and I think you all were, yep. So we appreciate working with that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is considering for new cemetery regulations. Jocelyn, you've got this one?
I have this one and the next one.
Okay.
There we go. All right. Good afternoon. Again, Jocelyn Murphy, Director of Planning. So we have discussed potential regulations for cemeteries for a few different meetings. And so this is just to kind of follow up with some of the questions that you've had and get direction. So again, just discussing some new information and get direction from you, whether you want us to proceed with drafting an ordinance. One of the questions was where are the current cemeteries in the city? These are the cemeteries with the acreages. The largest one, of course, is the Oak Grove Cemetery, which is about 27 acres, which is here on East Irving Boulevard. This is interesting, this Tompkins Cemetery, everybody's probably seen it when you drive by 183, actually when they widen 183. It is now in the right-of-way. So when you drive by, you just kind of see a little clump of trees that's actually in, that's actually a cemetery. It was much easier for them just to keep it, I guess, than to try to move everybody. But the one is actually right next to the highway, kind of up on a hill. But other than that, we just have a lot of smaller cemeteries in the city. So this is information that you've seen before, so I won't go through it in detail. Of course, the cemeteries are highly regulated through the state. There are several different statutes in the state that apply to cemeteries. There was a bill in 2023 which expanded the exception for cemeteries that now cities that are within a county of a population of more than 750,000 or adjacent to a county with that population could create standards for cemeteries. It requires that a city provide for an application process. That doesn't mean they have to be approved, but the cities do or can create that process. Again, the bill requires the written application and the governing body can prescribe the information to be included in the application and authorize the establishment or use of the cemetery if the governing body determines it is appropriate. And so we, again, met with the Texas Cemeteries and Crematories Association representatives a few months ago, and they gave us a lot of information on types of burials, the average size of cemetery spaces, generally what the density is of cemeteries. They also gave us information about the, just the establishment of a cemetery. They explained that there are some high upfront costs to develop the new cemeteries, mainly the infrastructure involved in just getting the basic road network, grading, drainage, that type of thing in there. That, they also explained that cemeteries need to be able to fund ongoing maintenance, and that includes the irrigation, landscaping, trash cleanup, and just the general, in order to not be in violation of code compliance. They also recommended that a starting size of less than 10 acres wouldn't be large enough for any more than one generation, so they recommended a larger size of about 25 acres. They also kind of gave us some information about the cost of a typical perpetual care cemetery and explained to us at that time that most of cemeteries don't have any oversight. Some cemeteries have endowment funds but are not perpetual care per chapter 712. And some cemeteries that are not perpetual care often run out of funds for management and the Department of Banking does not have the obligation to take those over. A religious cemetery is not regulated as a perpetual care cemetery. So the Texas Health and Safety Code for perpetual care cemeteries requires any cemetery after September 1, 1993 had to be perpetual care. They had to establish a trust for the funding of the ongoing maintenance. There are exceptions to that rule. Any new cemetery that's under 10 acres, any new cemetery that's a church, religious society or denomination, or a new cemetery that's owned by a city, county, or state. So those do not have to be perpetual care cemeteries per the Health and Safety Code. So again, the perpetual care cemeteries are regulated by the Department of Banking. The things that are here in blue are some of the newer topics. So again, we discussed that we had, we're bringing an update, but we're also bringing some new information. And what we learned as well is the Department of Banking, when people do apply for a new cemetery, they do have to have previous city approval, that the city does have to sign off on that application before they submit to the Department of Banking as perpetual care cemetery. And again, the cemetery would default to the custody of Department of Banking if it becomes, if it becomes deficient in their maintenance. We also learned that the city can ask, can ask if the proposed cemetery is perpetual care, but we cannot require it, again, if it's a church, religious society, or denomination because of the exemption. And if they wanted to volunteer to be perpetual care, the state would not accept an application. So our proposed application procedures would be similar to the typical SP2 generalized site plan. We'd provide a questionnaire. We'd do the public notification as we would do for any typical zoning case. We'd post zoning signs, do the newspaper ad, and do the public hearing from the city council and the planning and zoning commission. So in the supplemental questionnaire, these are just some items that we would request, just basic information. We would ask, you know, who owns the land, whether it would be perpetual care, how the permanent endowment fund would be established, what type of experience they have, and just general information on how it will be operated. So some regulations, you've seen a lot of this before, but we've gone back and as we've been kind of massaging this process, done some revisions to the proposals. I'll just touch on those for minimum lot area. We had originally proposed in March to be 10 acres. We did increase that to 25, which is consistent with what the TCCA recommended. For the maximum height, we added that they could basically go over 25 feet if there are one-to-one on the setback, up to 35 feet, and that's just for structures. And then it'd be 35 feet for all other zoning districts. We also reduced some of the setbacks for the internment from the right-of-way property lines, internal drives, just to give a little more room and not be too excessive and also meet some of the setbacks in the other districts. We also established the building, the setbacks for the accessory uses from right-of-way and from property lines, again, to be consistent with other districts. The fencing, air screening, lighting hadn't changed. We do have, we did find some information on, it was from, some information from how they do veteran cemeteries. And so we brought over some standards that they do have minimum 20, 24-foot wide internal roadways. And so we did establish that and determined that was probably appropriate for a typical cemetery. But again, that was from the national veterans cemetery standards. There are certain accessory buildings and uses will be permitted, and we'd be establishing, if they wanted to do a funeral home, so as they, what am I trying to say? So the funeral home, if they are going to put that on in order to have services in the structure, they would be required to have parking, otherwise there's no parking that would be allowed. A crematory would not be permitted as a funeral home. That is a separate type of use. So this is the meetings that we have had. We're here today on October 30, the 3rd, 2024, talking about the standards. And if you direct us to proceed with drafting the ordinance, then we would set up a schedule and bring that back to you. Be happy to answer your questions.
Mark? On the point about the perpetual care cemeteries, I think that we can require that. I think that we, as a city, have a legitimate, non-discriminatory reason for doing that. We've talked about it before, that the benefits of having a perpetual care cemetery with the bond money upfront and the ability for the state to take it over if there were to be a default on it, I think that, I think that we should still consider that. And if, I would say that if we're not, then we need to be looking at other things to, as far as the ordinance goes, to better protect ourselves. I had another question, too, is like, in the ordinance, can we like, can we specify like, you know, the, where the graves have to be installed to be implemented? Because I'm thinking like, you know, we're considering whether these cemeteries might fail, you know, and then if the city then has to take it over, we'd want the ability then to, you know, sell other parts of the land to be able to fund, I guess, the maintenance of the cemetery if it becomes our obligation. Is that something that is ever done in the ordinances? Like, because if they're to spread out, then the land's just basically, then you can't then split it up.
And this was interesting when we, of course, Ken did most of this research, there aren't that many regulations out there for cities to establish cemeteries. A lot of cities have, you know, how do you operate? How do you maintain? You know, the visitation they have, how do you operate a cemetery? But there aren't that many how you establish a cemetery. So I don't know of any that, in the research that we did, that found getting down to that level of determining where the location would be of the internments.
All right. Well, I'm of the opinion that we should stay with requiring perpetual care cemeteries. Because I don't think, I don't think it's discriminatory in any way.
Abdul?
Josh, thank you very much. You know, last time when we have the State Cemetery Association rep here, they commended the city of Irving for considering this efforts to put the ordinance in place. And for that, I thank you, the staff and your team. There are a couple of things I just wanted to have clarity on. I agree with Mark that we should have a cemetery, a perpetual cemetery, though the, sometime they give us, the state give us the flexibility of not having it if it is under 10 acres. it if it is under 10 acres. So my question to you is, if an applicant files a zoning case for a size under 10 acres, what is our position on that?
Well, it determine, it depends on what the council establishes as those minimum standards.
The recommendation is for 25 acres, you know, 25 acres, it's hard to find any land in Irving, let alone for the cemetery. So I, and this is my, you know, feedback, that if there are cemeteries which are, you know, if you look at the, there's only one, as you mentioned, Oak Grove, is 26 or 27 acres. The rest of it is somewhere around less than a couple acres or maybe max four acres, right? So there is not much land in Irving to be considered for cemetery. So I was just wondering that the cemetery, which is a Harrington Cemetery, which is located just next to the Interstate, Interstate 161, there are some land available in surrounding to that area, which is, which falls under 10 acres. That's why my question was, what if the applicant comes with a filing on, on that particular site? What would be our position? And we just need to see whether we could be able to accommodate that.
Yeah, if, if the city council adopted 25 acres as the standard, then that would be a variance request through the SP2 process for less than the 25 acres.
Okay. Even though if it is faith-based or religious or under a trust?
Yeah, so the, the state bill allows the city to set standards and then, so the, the regulations that you just named off were the perpetual care. But actually, the, the establishment of that is, the city has the right to be able to set the application process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Brad. Well, I like what Mark and Abduel said about being perpetual care, because that's a, that's been our issue. And if, if somehow we can't do that, when we get advised, whatever, if somehow we can't do that, I'd like a very clear statement that we're, the city will not, or that we prohibit ourselves from chipping in or something like that by ordinance or even charter, because it's really, we will be asked to, to take care of these. And as Chris Hillman has pointed out, we don't want to own cemeteries. Now, 25 acres seems to me like there's, there would, there's nothing that's going to qualify for it. So I guess everything would be an exception. But going back to that first slide, all we have to do by state law is create an application process. I don't think any of these other cities are doing it, so we're kind of ahead of the game on this, but we don't have to approve whatever's brought to us. What we're doing is approving kind of some parameters, but I mean, there's one in mind that's being proposed, it just, it wouldn't be 25 acres and there's really nobody could buy 25 acres. So if we're going to do this, is that even the best standard? You know, is it maybe a 10 or something like that? Or, you know, because even if a 0.25 acre cemetery came at us, we don't have to approve it. So maybe there's, I mean, I, I would, for sure, if we can do it, like to do perpetual care. It's looking dubious on that topic, but because that's been the biggest problem. And may, maybe it's something that we can put in our legislative program, because it, it is a true problem for cities to be able to deal with that. And I think the one that's being thought of is, is proposing to have a trust to take care of its, its business. And so it seems silly to me, like if a church says, look, we, or a religious organization says, we want this to last, we want to respect the burial of our, our people, why couldn't we accept that? Like, and I get it that maybe the law prohibits that, but that shouldn't be the law. If somebody wants to do and is willing to do it, that they could qualify. And maybe it's just the state doesn't want, want that burden either, but to me, the, the state, if somebody's saying, I'm volunteering to be perpetual care, why not? Like, why, why shouldn't they be able to apply for that? So, and maybe they have some great answers to that, but I think, to me, this is challenging because I don't, I don't see, like, where's the 25 acre plot? We can say no to anything anyway. We just have to establish a process. So I know that we, this is what we told you last time, but, you know, I've been thinking about that and it just doesn't seem to match. Like, if there was one that came up that was, that we really liked, it should be possible. And maybe the solution is that it's, that it's a variance. But I mean, to me, everything would be a variance if it's 25 acres. And maybe that's what we want, you know, I would, I guess that would be fine, but that just seems awfully big.
Al.
Yeah, Kayo, in writing, I mean, reading, excuse me, the HB 783, it does state, however, there is no entitlement for a cemetery. Okay? So that means we do not have to deal with or approve it. But then it also talks about an application. Before anything happens, we must go forward and actually set in place an application, no matter what our final decision is. Because I would assume in the application, there may be a threshold, 25 acres as an example, or something like that, so that the people that are going to try to file for an application based on what the law says, my, again, my assumption is, we don't have to do any of this. Am I correct?
You're correct. The statute doesn't require you to approve cemeteries. If you'll recall, before the law was in existence, we could not. So this was an opening to give, give an applicant the ability to ask. What staff is proposing is that in Irving, y'all, no one's done this. So in Irving, the application is a zoning application, because when we really stepped back and looked at it, you know, you all just kind of 30,000-foot level, you know with zoning, you have the absolute ability just to say no.
Yep.
And I know there's been some questions about perpetual care. I think, you know, the staff, planning staff, I know, legal department staff, we just spent an extensive time trying to think through that. We were just ending up in kind of the circle that Councilman Lamore just kind of highlighted for you all. If a, we'll just use the example of a religious organization, if they wanted to establish perpetual care, that is a term of art, that is regulated by the state. The state will not give that to them. So the way that staff thought to balance it is that supplemental questionnaire, because think about this, y'all, when we regulate zoning, you are really looking at the land use. You are not looking at the business, how the business is operated. And so really, it's not a, it's not about discriminatory intent, it really is more like our business regulation, like regulating these, it's heavily regulated by the state. And the requirement by the state that they be perpetual care is that if they, if they lapse in operation, then the state, state steps in. But also what has happened, Councilman Lamore just has highlighted it, is there are all these exceptions. And so I think staff has really said, look, from a land use perspective, you all have the ultimate authority to say yes or no. The supplemental questionnaire gives you a little bit of insight into the structure of what they're contemplating, but we don't even know, right? Because they have to get the city permission first before they go to the state. So that was kind of the rub of just trying to simplify this and make it easy for you all of just, the application would be like every other zoning ask. And that also contextualizes it. Where is someone contemplating putting this? Because the staff's thought was, that makes sense for us and for you in particular to know, where is it being placed, how many acres is it, et cetera? So that's kind of how we tried to balance and thread, kind of thread the conversation of giving you the information, putting you in the posture to just say no, and then respecting the fact that we have a heavily regulated kind of process by the state and kind of honoring that unless it changes. So just to give a little bit of context.
Yeah, well, no, I just wanted to be real for what I was reading. And I guess when I look at the list of cemeteries and the size of acreage, I mean, they're really small and probably, they came up as family plots for the most part. Can an existing one of these nine be purchased or taken over? I mean, what's the process on that existing cemetery? Or, like I saw, it's Sowers. I mean, it was really in disrepair until, until Gerald and a few people really, you know, stepped up to try to make that happen. So I'm just kind of understanding, what's the other side of that?
And I, I don't know that I know the, the answer to that. We can find out what that would look like, but it sounds like, because there's a group considering purchasing one of these, there is probably a mechanism for someone to purchase and take over it. We just haven't looked at that process.
But it probably has nothing to do with us, that's probably a private, or something within the state regulations that deal with it at this point. But I, I don't know, but it'd be very interesting if this is going to go forward. So anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark.
The idea that the state would say a religious entity cannot even apply for it, that seems to be discriminatory. I mean, it seems like that would violate the law.
And we were challenged by the response we got. And then we were just trying to think of the sequencing, right? They come and make a commitment to you all, but ultimately, kind of in the chain of what occurs, that they go to the state, the state's like, well, we're not, we're not going to allow you to be a perpetual care because of this is your, this is your structure. So it makes the, just puts us in a difficult position. Don't want to make.
It seems like that could be challenged in the courts, it's like, it's clearly a violation.
Right, right. And/or it's just that, you know, the religious entities, you know, they get to be exempt from state regulation. Right, really? And, and that's probably why it was placed there, was just not subjecting them to go through that process. And again, y'all, just think about, it's, this provided an opening and, and the folks in the state association, when they met with us internally, and I think here publicly just said, there was a lot of things not really thought about. And as we have reached out, I think not only planning staff, but just, I know, our team and just reaching out, I think everybody's kind of grappling with how to deal with this. But that's why it's being proposed to you as a land use application, because it better contextualizes it and puts it in perspective. And then also you have that ability to just say yes or no without consequence.
I, I still think that the 25 acres is, you know, we heard from the experts, talked about, you know, less than, really 10 acres or less, and you're just going to fill it up very fast. And so I think it needs to be 25 acres even, and if we don't have it, we don't have it. But, so I still think we should stay with that. I still think we should require it to be perpetual care and maybe somebody challenges that, but it's in the best interest of the city to require perpetual care cemeteries.
Okay, I think, you know, if you look at some of these, like Old Kit has actually been merged with Oak Grove. And that was, there was a group of, of elders, in fact, it was Bill Brown's dad, Edgar, who was in charge of the Old Kit Cemetery, and they had a bunch of people that worked with them to bring it together. Because when you, you got to remember, back before Irving incorporated all these, these were separate cities, like Old Kit was a separate city, the Bear Creek was separated from the city, wasn't part of the city. So these were just basically small get, areas where people lived, where they had a cemetery. And so they really didn't, so when we started incorporating and bringing them all into the, under the city of Irving, that's how you ended up with a lot of these. And I, I think, like everybody else, I think we need to come up with a way to have some type of perpetual care, because Sowers is a prime example. If, you know, Gerald took the time to get involved with it and he got a bunch of people involved with it because his parents are there, but after his generation, then if nobody picks up the flag or banner again, then it just falls into disarray again. And so you just continually have that, that area, which is disrespectful to the people that are buried there. But it's also, it becomes a, a challenge for the city for trash and rodents and everything else if it's not maintained at a certain level. So I think we've got to come at it from that perspective. I think if you're joining it with another one, you know, that could be part of the, the process, that then the, then the combination of it, they take over the responsibility of maintaining what is already there. I mean, you have this, you know, if you look at the, the Bear Creek and the Harrington, I mean, those are ones where they, again, they rely on volunteers to come in and, and clean them every once in a while, just to kind of get them put together. And so to me, the challenge is that there was a reason we weren't in the cemetery business to begin with. But now that we are in it, it's, it's a, it's one of those things that we just got to figure out how it's going to be maintained. And also, I'm assuming that, did they pay taxes? So I would assume they're all nonprofits, so. So again, you talk about taking 25 acres off the tax roll or 10 acres or whatever it is, you know, that's another consideration of, not only do you not collect dollars for it, but you still, now you've got a maintenance issue that's going to be popping up as well. So, you know, my whole thing is just the concern of even getting into it, into the business, to be honest with you, because you're losing tax revenue and you're inheriting a, a maintenance nightmare in, in that. It's, it's too bad, because you want the, you want a cemetery to look nice. I mean, you want to be respectful of the people that are in there and, and the families that have entrusted that area for their, for their loved ones, so. But I knew, I do know that some of them have kind of worked together with other cemeteries to kind of set it up so that they're maintained and cleaned. Now, I don't know how much Oak Grove is, is that, include the land that they own that they, across the street and stuff, I wonder, are adjacent to them? Or if it's?
They, I believe they expanded to the north.
To the north, yeah.
So they, yeah, so they do.
Or it's burning properties, stuff up there. Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, it's 3 o'clock. Why don't we take a 15-minute break before we move on to the next one?
... spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories in Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat, Kite, and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This holiday cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m.
Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview Illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving. For all of the important local stories and information, we bring you on ICTN City Source. we bring you on ICTN City Source.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone, I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories and Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone, I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories and Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone, I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories and Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone, I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories and Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone, I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories and Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd.
Okay, we're back on, on the, on the air. And the next item on our agenda is the data, data centers and potential regulations changes. Regulatory changes, excuse me. Jocelyn, I think they shut your mic off while you're in between times.
There we go. Now I'm on.
There you go.
I see the bright light. Jocelyn Murphy, Director Planning, again. So we, yes, this is talking about data centers, potentially regulatory changes. Council asked us to bring this back. And so we wanted to let you know what we have found. So we'll talk about the background permitting data centers, the different concerns, the impact of changes on the existing data centers, and any potential amendments going forward. So data centers were considered to operate similarly to warehouses and were permitted in the same identified industrial districts. However, concerns were raised about the external effects, especially power distribution and the continuous noise from cooling equipment. A unified development code was approved on June 27th of this year to create the development standards, which included items such as, well, sorry, inside the industrial districts where they were allowed by right, and included items such as setbacks, height, and screening to provide the neighborhood protection. So you've seen these pictures before, just as a reminder of how modern data centers operate with their cooling units and their different energy generators and their height. Normally, if they're a one-story or two-story building, they are pretty complex. And again, they are, they do require a lot of cooling and water usage. Some concerns that we identified at the time, we're building height, building setbacks, noise, primarily those cooling operations for the humming that would come from the cooling systems, greening, screening on the ground and rooftop, parking, and landscaping. systems, screening on the ground and rooftop, parking, and landscaping. So these are the four existing data centers, and some that have entitlements from zoning. So Longhorn Drive, we do have an existing data center. This is in the orange. This was approved by SP2. In the green is the 111 Customer Way, which people know is Neiman Marcus site. That, I believe, has a permit for demo, also approved by SP2. And the University of Dallas property, I understand there's been no activity, no permitting activity on that one. Again, that was permitted by SP2. The one in red is 505 North Wildwood Drive. This one was an existing warehouse, allowed by right in the zoning district, and it had all its parking, didn't need any variances, so it did not have an SP2 zoning. They also have their permits, and they are fully under construction currently. So the one in red is, the other three that are SP2 are identified clearly as data centers. The one in red is, would be allowed by right, or, I'm sorry, be considered legal nonconforming or grandfathered if these amendments were to proceed. So the council asked us to look at the conditional use permit option for permitting data centers. The data center regulations that were recently adopted would apply. They could request variances through this process, and any CUP allowances would apply. This amendment, similar to the recent card room we just discussed, would require mailed notification to all the property owners, business personal property owners, and the property tenants or occupants in state law for the zoning districts where data centers are allowed. We're estimating those will be at least 5,000-plus mailouts. So a little bit of a comparison between the conditional use permits and data centers. This is consistent with what you saw before when we created the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit and the SP2s do both require the PNC and council public hearings and notification. The conditional use permit can be temporary, council can set time limits. We do feel that if we apply the conditional use permit to data centers, that they will probably not meet the conditions of the time limit section. SP2 generalized site plan would not be time limited, as that would be a permanent zoning. A conditional use permit can be revoked if it meets the findings and requirements and procedures in the section for the conditional use permit. And the SP2 site plan is permanent, require the city initiated rezoning in order to undo. So when we discuss time limits, the city council would have to determine certain items in order to impose a time limit on a development. So if the use is presented by the applicant as a temporary or interim use, or if considered temporary interim, so that the remove of the use is reasonably too expected after a period of time. And that could be consistent with leasing of space or minimal construction of property improvements. Also, if the use is consistent with the current uses in the area, or if the anticipated changes of the use would cause requested use to become incompatible. And if the health, safety, and welfare of the public would not be adequately protected without that time limit. So when a conditional use permit is approved, the city council would find, would need to find these appropriate conditions or safeguards, whether the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with the existing uses, whether it meets all the supplemental use standards as set forth in Chapter 3, which were recently adopted. The proposed use is compatible with and preserves the character integrity of adjacent neighborhoods, whether there's any negative impact on the surrounding area, and whether the proposed use is not materially detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So again, those are items the city council would need to find. So in order to revoke a, review and revoke a conditional use permit, the, so there is a periodic review of the conditional use permit to make sure it is being operated consistent with the conditions of approval, and it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. If it is not compliant, then the director would give written notice of the nature of violation and give them a period of time to remediate. So this would be the typical code compliance process that is always conducted whenever someone is not compliant with their zoning regulations. If those violations are not corrected, then the city attorney's office would notify the property owner in writing that public hearing has been set to revoke the conditional use permit. Public notification and public hearing process would be instigated, which would be the mailed notifications and the newspaper notice and the posting of the signs. The PNC would conduct a public hearing no more than 30 days after the city attorney's notice. And the Planning and Zoning Commission could consider public testimony, public police records, code enforcement records, health and safety concerns, staff reports, municipal court records, and any state license required. The city council would conduct the second public hearing and could revoke or modify the conditional use permit. More considerations in order to revoke a conditional use permit, as the below findings would need to be made. The circumstances have changed, the initial findings can't be made, there's any alterations or enlargements after approval, any violations of provisions of the site plan, whether the CUP was obtained by fraud or with deception, any use was ceases or was suspended for six months, if any of the conditions of the conditional use permit were not met, or if the use is in violation of any statute, ordinance, or law, and the use is detrimental to the public's health, safety, or welfare or constitutes a nuisance. So those would be the basis to revoke a conditional use permit. Again, we're here on October 3rd. If we get direction to proceed with an ordinance, we would come back to you with a schedule. Again, this would involve notification of approximately an estimated 5,000. We're not quite sure how many postcards that would be. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mark.
The CUP, I mean, it's a great device, you know, it gives us flexibility. It seems kind of odd to be using that with the big structure that comes in. And I guess, what are your thoughts about that, that you're actually like having a large building that's unique, it's got a, like, one type of use, coming in as a CUP, and then you shut it down, and then the building can't be used for anything else?
Our original proposal was either between like the SP2 and the CUP, and we received direction to proceed with the CUP, but those were the two options that staff was considering.
I guess it's fine, right? Because we, you know, if it can't be used, the CUP is revoked, and it can't be used that way, then whoever buys the property, or whoever the owner is, just has to, they're gonna have to tear it down. That's how it works, right?
Or they would have to convert it to a use that would be consistent with the district.
Okay, thanks.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding on that, though, is if the CUP were to be revoked, first, we would have to give them an opportunity to remedy whatever it is that's causing us to revoke it, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, looking through the, looking through the list of, you know, reasons for revocation, well, so first of all, the time determination, can you go into a little more detail about why it is you think that it would likely not meet the conditions? Is it particularly that first item?
Whether it's temporary interim use, that's, yes, that's primarily the, because the conditional use permit, when created, was intended to maybe allow for a use that wasn't clearly allowed by right, or maybe it was in a transitional area, or something that maybe council might be okay with and kind of wanted to give someone opportunity to test out, and then the ability to remove that if the use didn't end up being what was intended.
Right. Okay, so I mean, that kind of makes sense to me, because unlike, you know, so for, a good example of how we're using the CUP that does have time limitations is for, you know, auto-related uses in the Heritage District. That's a pretty prevalent use there right now. We are entering a transitional period where we're trying to redevelop that area, so we want to allow it, but it's also not, you know, it's not a use where they're coming in and they're building a massive structure specifically for autos that can't be used for anything else. So that, okay, that makes sense to me. So since the, any revocation would have to be for, for something on this list of eight things, which, as I'm looking through it, for a data center, I'm looking mostly at item number eight, which is, you know, detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare or constitutes a nuisance, which is kind of the main worry that we identified as like, well, maybe we need to have something more, you know, more regulated. When people are coming in and asking for a data center, we want to be able to look and see what we're signing on for here. So I mean, I think that's the item. So if we were to revoke one of these, we would have to go to them first and say, hey, this is an issue. You gotta fix this, otherwise your CUP could be revoked. Right?
Correct. Yeah, and any new data center that would come in, even as a conditional use permit, would have to follow those standards for screening, and noise, and distance, and setbacks, and all that. So if there's something they are doing that's in violation of that for some reason, if they put an expansion or something on there, then that could be a basis for it. But if they're operating as they were adopted, if they were approved, then there would be a kind of discussion to be held, are they operating outside of the bounds of their conditional use permit or not?
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I'm comfortable with using the CUPs as the mechanism for this. I think Councilman Croninwatt's observation that it's a little bit of a strange use for the CUP, I kind of agree with that, but I think, you know, the CUP, it's not necessarily always gonna have that time, even if it could, it's not necessarily always gonna be time-limited. So I'm pretty comfortable with doing this, even with the caveat that we're not gonna, we're likely not going to be able even to consider putting a time limitation on it, which I think would also, that makes sense, because you are talking about a pretty distinctive development, and it's not easily converted to another use.
Just trying to think through the CUP process a little more. I think, so if we were to approve one, and we can't just think, oh, it's just a CUP, it's gonna be a big deal, because there'll be millions of dollars of investment put into it. And so then to take it away is a big thing, which I guess could expose us to liability is that it's, we're not giving them due process and taking away the CUP.
Right. I mean, this is a little, I think, you know, I think Jocelyn kind of respectfully posed, I mean, I think the request from council is to consider a CUP, and so I think the point here was just to outline, you know, some of the things that are really effective for a CUP may not, we may not be able to avail ourselves because of the nature of this particular type of use. I think you've hit the nail on the head of, you know, what's the better process here? Is it CUP, or do we just allow for an SP2? And then again, this is a land use decision, right? And you've had some cases where it has also required a change of, like, the comp plan. So there are some, you know, there are some other ways to kind of keep check on this, or for these types of uses to come before you for approval before they just go in by right.
Are you aware of other cities doing big developments like this by CUP?
No. Generally, the CUP is for those uses that are temporal in nature, or ones that may have secondary effects. We don't have bars, but that is a common example, because then it gives the city, you don't have to go through a whole rezoning process, you're able to kind of essentially revoke their ability to do that. So, but again, want to respect the requests that came in, and I think staff's trying to accommodate that request, but also just make you aware of some of the limitations, CUP process, or some of the benefits of that for this type of investment in use. And there may be just a better way to kind of step back and think about it.
Well, I don't know if this is too late to the game or not, but I did have some more thoughts based on things we were hearing. So is there a way, because a couple of the critiques of data centers would be energy and water consumption. Can we regulate the type of water consumption? We were talking about that earlier, and the increasing use, but data centers tend to be a very large water consumer. But on the energy side as well, can we, if it's gonna require a new power station or something, then maybe the CUP gets revoked? Because that's why one thing about CUP is, well, if this is gonna require a whole new power station that takes a bunch of acreage, valuable acreage off the tax rolls of something we weren't told about, or maybe we were even told, hey, it's, oh, no, we're good, we're already by one, that the CUP be revoked? Because I don't know that we can regulate energy consumption, but it is of concern where maybe we can regulate the CUP where it's tied to an existing power source, number one. Number two, the water usage is a little concerning, because my understanding of that is it's a high water usage. So is there something that would be more acceptable to Todd, or is there a pricing, some premium pricing, if they're gonna make all this money, that they ought to be paying for? Because if we have to go out and get another water supply, that's a significant cost. I mean, we talked about that this morning. But another thing I was concerned about, I don't know if we have anything to do with it, but I'm interested in, is just reading data centers are, you know, off-putting a lot of greenhouse gases? And so is there a way for us to look at that, or get that figured out, where, is there conjunction of us and maybe state regulations that look at that? But that's a little concerning to me. And I think we've very well addressed the noise issue. I'm sure we're fine on electrical safety, because I know we've gone all through that. But then I've noticed some other municipalities have required those sources of energy, and actually required, like, access to fiber before they'll approve them, because I guess there's a great fiber need, and so that's another unanticipated consequence. And again, I'm throwing, like, all this new stuff or old stuff out here, but I think a CUP could be good. And in one sense is that if they, if they're going beyond the power, the existing power source, or if they can't show compliance with these things, we can revoke the CUP. And so, but I'm concerned a little bit about how much water, how much energy is it going to require, another energy source that's, people will not be happy about that, you know, if it's a visible energy station that's just created by one user. If it's gonna be created by one user, my perfect solution is to put it onsite, that they volunteer their land to do it, or the CUP goes away, or something like this. But what about greenhouse gases or access to fiber? Is that something we could do?
I will say, you know, I don't want to say these are not legitimate concerns. The issue for us is really, we're looking at land use regulations, and so really, you know, the confines of what can happen, like, when you evaluate a land use decision. I mean, in Texas, at least, on the energy piece, because that has been an issue, and I think there has been some litigation relating to just like distribution lines, sorry, transmission lines versus actually onsite lines. I'm not sure on the water consumption and the fiber, just because generally, the infrastructure pieces are all addressed through the subdivision process and not really through the kind of land use process. But again, I don't want to minimize, I think some of what is occurring is just, you know, approving a particular use and then appreciating it has a larger impact than maybe what was originally contemplated. So I'm just saying, step back. The whole point of this, one element of it is, how do you bring these types of uses so that you have a context of where is it going? And then what are the types of questions that get asked? Because certainly, those are questions that can be asked, and then I think, you know, we would counsel you of just, you know, the intensity of a use, then you have the ability to evaluate it. And some of the questions that have come up is just, when you allow things by right, you don't have the ability, they have the existing zoning, they're not coming back to the council for that approval, right? They have the authority just to come in and proceed with their development. They have the authority just to come in and proceed with their development. So that's why we're just trying to find a mechanism. I mean, this is one component. I'm sure planning staff could also highlight for you kind of your comp plan as well because the zoning has to be in conformance with the comp plan. So I know that there was at least one of the data centers where it was also, it was a comp plan change and a land use decision. So just kind of thinking through like, hey, from a land use perspective, what can be done here? And so again, I think that staff was really trying to honor kind of direction from y'all. Hey, is CUP effective here? But y'all have raised really good questions, which has been part of our internal discussion just to kind of say, hey, we probably should tell you, hey, here's the current CUP process and it does have some limitations or challenges that it is not easy for this type of investment and intensity of use to just put a time limit on it. Likely, we would not be able to do that. And then secondarily, if we're going to revoke the use, it's a heavy burden on us unless, as Jocelyn pointed out, I mean, if they're expanding it or changing it, then that becomes a likely point for us to evaluate it. But the issues that you raised generally in a land use context, that would not be considerations for a CUP revocation. We'd probably have to do a little bit of research on, you're raising good issues. I just don't know that anyone has used this particular vehicle for data houses. They've either used the, you know, specific zoning categories. Irving, we do love our site plan zoning, so that's just another tool that's available to you. And just, you know, again, that's why, big picture, it's like, think about, the gatekeeping is really on allowing the use or not allowing the use in the first place.
Well, I think we're getting ready to dust off the comprehensive plan anywhere. We may already done that, but we're getting ready to rethink it again. And so maybe it's just a new separate category because I think the major concern was, well, wow, this is freeway zoning, which is any variety of things that we would not have just immediately accepted as a data center or even a warehouse for that example. So maybe it's best we get granular with it just as a zoning category rather than CUP.
Yeah. Al?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, one of the things that keeps coming back, and I really liked the way it was laid out as far as almost like zone where we could have data centers. And when you look up at Freeport, that's a good example of where two things are going to occur. As we do any more, hopefully, data centers in those, whether warehouses or whatever they might be, that's going to have a real positive impact, Dan, on having the replacement of our roads up there is a good example. But it's also business property tax to the city. And it's high value that's inside those buildings. And so I'm big on that because I think it's, whether we like it or not, it's here. But there's going to be another piece to this. When they start to go to what they're calling AI hubs for, with data centers, again, you're going to see those locations. So I went back and looked at our Economic Development Strategic Plan, Philip. Just so that you don't know, I do look at some of the stuff you lay on me, but all for the right reason. Targeting, visioning, looking down the road. As we look, Mayor, into those areas where it makes sense and around the airport, I mean, I'm looking at Loudoun County when I go into DC, and it's right there by Dulles and in that area. So there's some real good solid applications for it. But that also says, like, they're wanting to go into some of the buildings in the Los Colinas deed restricted areas where there are office buildings. So there's our trade off going forward. So my sense is, as long as we're regionalizing, I guess that's the term I'd like to use, by targeting where these would be the best place to put. Because if not, we're going to be all over. And I don't think they should be in some of the residential areas, things of that sort. So anyway, there's a kind of a silver lining on the side of this, too.
Philip?
Mayor, Jocelyn, could you go back to the slide that talks about the criteria for approval? I would point you to item D if the CUP is the avenue to use. It's one of the considerations, and I think goes to your question, Councilman Lamorges, about other criteria, other things you might consider. It fairly broadly allows the consideration be, is it compatible and preserves character integrity of the neighborhood and adjacent development? So there is the allowance to consider the impact of this development, not only on the property, but generally, how's it going to impact? And you may look at issues like, where's the electricity going to come from? How are they going to, where's the water service going to come from? Jocelyn, could you also go to the map of the data centers? One other thing I wanted to point out, by using the CUP process, it creates a little bit of a conundrum for that one at 505 Wildwood, where if we did do this, they would automatically be considered upon adoption of that ordinance a nonconforming use. No data center with the investment that they have is going to want to be a nonconforming use because it creates all kinds of issues when you want to go and sell it. Nobody wants to buy a nonconforming use because then the option to continue that in perpetuity comes up in question. So I think there's a question as to whether we want to reach out to that particular data center and talk to them about options that would make them not nonconforming. For instance, coming in with an SP case to approve, to get that entitlement cemented in zoning as opposed to allowing them to continue under a legal nonconformous category. That's just a question I would ask.
Mark?
On the comprehensive plan, I think it's very important for us to, like Al and Brad were saying, to identify where we want those. And I mentioned before about coordinating with Encore to put those new transformer stations in areas where that is to lessen the possibility that they'll come in later on and put them where we don't want them. So I agree with those points. And then I like Brad's comments about, you know, if you're going to get granular as far as like what you need to do to be compliant with the, said we do a CUP. But I worry that like with the electricity providing, that Encore has a right to go wherever they want. So we could have that being required, but then Encore could just take care of it themselves and just go wherever they want.
Well, I think that the challenge we have is that we're on the cusp of this really going pretty wild because of our location. We're right in the sweet spot as we are with a lot of things we do within the city of Irving. And to me, the challenge becomes, and the reason I like the CUP and the criteria is because I think we're going to have to figure out some way to have, to make sure that our decision stands. I think if you just have a zoning category, you know, you're going to be granting a variance here. Well, we know, I know for the last 32 years, once we grant a variance to the setback on the front yard on zero lot line homes, that's the variance, there is no variance. That's what it is from now on. So I would rather have us look at each case by case, which is what we can do with a CUP. And I also think that, to the point of the comprehensive plan, I think there's probably, as much as we could, the challenge we have is we've got these broad zoning categories, which are crazy. And so you can almost do anything you want, anywhere you want. And then if you do an SP one or two, you can do even more. So the point is that we need to figure out how we're going to make sure that we have the proper environment for these things. Now, you're right about the fact that it costs about $250 million to build a power substation. And they have so many that they can build in the area that they're allowed by right. Each year, they're allowed through their ability working with the federal or the state as to how many of them they can build and where they can build them and stuff like that. So realistically, it becomes whoever gets to them first and offers the deal, that's where it's going to go, rather than, to your point, us being able to say, look, we've got a lot of power over here. The Hitachi plant works out great for us because we built that knowing that was a high water user and they had their own power grid there. So it's worked out super well because everything we need is right there. But as we go into these other neighborhoods, we don't know where we're going to end up with if somebody decides to, you know, put one of these in the middle of Los Colinas along 114. If they're going to put up these big old 40, 50 foot towers from over by the riverside where they have the plant over there, if they, they're going to put 40 foot towers right through the middle of, down 114 to get to that place. So that's the real concern I have is by us not having the ability to, and because we have these broad categories, we just say, oh, you can put it there, but, you know, and then the variance is another thing. So I think that while I'm not a big fan of tightening so tight, I think with these, the demand and the people that are on there, already out there really pushing for these things. I mean, I've had in the last week, three people, Abdul, you had someone in last week that's looking at 25 acres in your area. And so, I mean, these things could be popping up all over the city. And if the power's coming from on the other side of the city, you're going to have what you have in Valley Ranch, which is those big old towers running right down the middle of it, which is, you know, fine if we all know where we're at and what we're doing. But the reality of it is, they have the power of eminent domain and they don't have to come to us. They can just do it. So we're kind of at the mercy of whoever goes out there and makes a deal with them to supply the power for their deal, then we get it. And so I think if we have the criteria, as Philip has talked about, and we have the CUP, I think between the two tools we have there, we can maybe find a way to control, control's a bad word. We can have the ability to make sure that wherever they're placed, there isn't an unintended consequence for what's around it. So I think that the CUP is the way we're going to have to go if we're really going to be able to get a commitment. And really, when you look at what they, you know, if there's those eight points, I mean, and to your point, we realistically can't say, well, you know, the mayor moved in over here and he doesn't like the noise, so he's going to pull your permit. You know, that can't be done. It's got to be a legitimate concern. It should be something that's done after it's constructed. I mean, it's going to be constructed to meet all our standards. So it'd be something they retrofit. It's a, let's say like at the ice arena, they put a big old new machine in there that, you know, was noise, then we got to get Shane involved and everybody gets all upset and they, we spent $2 billion, we don't want to take it out. And you say, well, then we're going to pull your CUP and then you can, then we'll take it, care of the process. So I think, to me, it's just a safeguard down the road more than it is up front, that we can make sure that if they come in and do replacement, or they come in and expand, or they do something different, or all of a sudden they want to add more power so that they decide they need another substation, that we can, you know, have some say in it. So I would say that we need to move forward with it. We need to think about how we can, because you pull up that map with all that purple on there. If we don't start addressing it, we're going to have everybody in their companion that wants a, is going to be looking at one of those purple spots because this is high dollar, high demand, great return on investment. So what's the thoughts of the rest? We've kind of walked around it a little bit, but I think we should move forward with it.
I can just make one observation about timing. The research and the, getting the notices right to comply with the state law will take a little bit of time.
Sure.
We've talked to the city attorney's office about when they feel like that they'd be able to do the research that they need to, to feel comfortable with how the ordinance is drafted. Doesn't look like November would be the date. It would probably be maybe December.
I'd rather you take the time and do it right, make sure we've got all our bases covered.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to, well, as much as I'd like to get moving forward on it because we've got consensus, and a lot of times it takes us a while to get consensus. A lot of times it takes, we can drag this out. So I'm not opposed to you all taking the time you need to make sure it's right so when it comes back to us, we don't have to redo it or something of that nature. Yeah, we only want to have to notice once. Very good point. Make sense? Everybody's shaking their head, so that's a good sign. Thank you, Jocelyn.
Thank you.
All right, the next two items on the agenda are housing items. We've decided, a couple of us were talking about it. Councilman Webb and Kyle, Councilman Taylor are not with us today and they're very instrumental in this. They've been very active in it. And I think it would be, Brad, I appreciate you bringing it up, it probably would be an injustice not to have them as part of this discussion. It's because they're both very vested in it and they've spent a lot of time and energy. And potentially, if we did it, we would probably be doing it again because they would question what we did or what we didn't do. But I think it's important that on these two items that are something that we have really been looking at, that we have the full council here to give you direction so that you're not, also to give you direction so you're not chasing your tail by one group saying one thing and the other guy says something. You've talked to somebody else. Let's just get everybody in the room and get you a direct consensus, if that's okay with you, Chris. Okay. Then that brings us to item nine. The project is asked to be pulled, so that's not available. K O, there was one we wanted to go in executive session to have a little more discussion on?
Yes, sir. There were a couple of items. These were the items number 40 and 41 on your regular agenda. If you're ready, Mayor. The time is 3:56 and the Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session to receive legal advice pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071.
Also, I want to thank the staff. I know they were all prepared for these presentations and stuff. So thank you for your time and energy in doing that. So wanted you to know that we appreciated it.
A place known for the sounds of concerts is also, for right now, the place to catch the sounds of construction. The Toyota Music Factory is getting new restaurants, fresh design elements, and the Plaza is getting a major overhaul. Let's start there.
It's amazing to see how it's changing so fast and what it's going to become.
It was really just time to refresh and renew the property and just create a new experience for our customers.
Here is an idea of what the Plaza will look like by year's end. The stage will be in a new location.
The stage will be right over to this area right here.
We're putting in a brand new double decker container bar that will service our new stage area.
But also having it upstairs on it where you can sit up and look down over the plaza.
We've got new conversational areas going in all around the Plaza area, brand new turf area. We're putting a little kids zone in down over on the other side next to Reservoir.
Surrounding the Plaza will be a lot of new restaurants.
We've got about 11 new tenants going in.
Mama Tried moved to another spot in the same building, making room for.
A real wood smoked barbecue concept called Shoal's Barbecue.
We've got Jackson Beer Garden just behind me. And then we have Pistols Cocktail Lounge going above Shoal's.
Above the new location of Mama Tried.
We've got Mojito Chino going above, which is a Latin fusion cuisine.
This building will be 100% occupied once these improvements are done.
And then we have the table going in as well. And a couple more that I can't announce just yet.
Crews are also adding aesthetics. Previously, plain walkways have fun new lights. And this walkway will be known as Artist Alley.
It's to showcase with Irving Arts Department, all the local artists here.
There are also new Instagrammable murals all over the property, adding to the visual vibe.
It's just really exciting to see it come together and we're almost finished.
The city of Irving owns the Toyota Music Factory. Its tenant is Brookfield Properties.
People naturally want to know, how is this being paid for?
Right now, the good news is, is that all the money that is being used to pay for this is generated on the property. Brookfield is actually paying for all these improvements upfront and then we're reimbursing them as this property generates revenue. The sales tax that is generated onsite will then re- The sales tax that is generated on site will then reimburse them for the improvements.
How important is this venue to Irving?
Well, it's extremely important to the businesses in the area. You see the Wells Fargo going across the street. You see the Caterpillar just moving their headquarters in. You see the new Christus Healthcare.
What we've been told by people that have recently moved in, this mixed use development with entertainment options, with dining options, is a really critical element for a business looking to relocate.
They want a live, work, play environment, and this is what we provide with this facility.
Even though concerts will always be a big draw.
All right. How do we really, truly tell a story here of more than music?
Teams hope the new attractions will drive more people to realize all that's here. Longtime favorites, as well as all of the new things coming to Irving.
Really, what we're hoping is that people will come to the Toyota Music Factory because it's an exciting place to be.
Couldn't be more excited about the progress and just what's about to come.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love, and breaking a curse.
It's the legendary uniform worn by America's sweethearts.
Respect and recognition worldwide that comes with wearing this uniform is what makes it iconic.
The renowned uniform is currently on display at the Irving Archives and Museum as part of their Cheer Couture exhibit, which features the original design by Dallas-based Paula Van Wagner and other key items.
Palms and boots that were worn by previous Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, Live in the Game.
The exhibition takes visitors on a fascinating journey through the creation of the uniform designed in 1972.
She created two versions of our uniform. She took those designs, fully fabricated, to text and said, what do you think? And he said, well, I think I need to see it on a body. She was the only one in the room. She said, well, okay, give me a minute. She stepped out, she put the uniform on, she came back, and he said, that's the one I want. So Paula was in fact, the first woman to wear our iconic uniform.
Since then, Paula's design has gone on to shape the identity of cheerleading worldwide. In 2018, the uniform was inducted into the Smithsonian along with a collection of the team's memorabilia, including a rare collector's item.
Can't purchase them anymore, but this is my DCC Barbie. And again, just some of these special things that we hold near and dear.
Former Irving resident Inga Van Wagner is Paula's niece, who reconnected the organization with her aunt after trying out for the team in the spring of 1995.
Inga Van Wagner is from right here in Irving, Texas. She's 24 years old and she's an accounting assistant for an international insurance company.
Before the hit Netflix series about the Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, ICTN caught the audition on camera at the Texas Stadium.
Big Bird was a special purchase. Had to do a little hunting to find one that dimension, that size. I needed it larger so that I would look smaller in proportion. So hunted around a little bit and got lucky and found one.
And captured Inga's momentous moment of making the team.
Contestant number 51, Inga Van Wagner.
In the city that holds a large part of the franchise's history.
The city of Irving is such a gem, and I so appreciate that the rich history of this city is highlighted and those stories are archived here in this museum.
And there are more stories to tell through this exhibit that highlights the pivotal role that Paula played in transforming the stereotypical cheerleader into a professional dance team in striking uniforms.
She's not one for the spotlight. She doesn't like a lot of fanfare, but she does appreciate just how warmly she's been received and recognized and featured in things like this exhibit because this is the story of a lifetime.
We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview Illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
After a temporary close, the Irving Arts Center reopens its doors.
It feels great to be back open. We've been closed for the last three months.
Taking the time to make some long-awaited renovations.
We have a new roof. We have a new HVAC system. We have new lighting on both of the stages that are now both LED, which is going to save a whole lot on our electric bill, and it's a lot more bells and whistles for our clients to use.
Already utilizing the new updates are those attending the monthly Jump Start Stories in Art.
Which is our fun program for stories and art for preschoolers. Are you in there? It's a collaboration that we do with the Irving Public Library, and we've been doing it for about 15 years now.
It's a free activity that includes story time followed by a creative take-home art project.
It is a really popular program and we wanted to get the kids back in here and we wanted to get, you know, arts flowing again.
It's just a great family activity and a good thing for the little ones. And, you know, it's a great combination to promote literacy and enjoyment of books along with the hands-on art activity, and we have a different theme every month.
This program is one of the many reasons why the city has invested in preserving the art center for all its benefits to the community.
The art center is really one of the jewels in the crown of Irving. It's, the community uses it. We bring in acts that use the space. So it's really important to keep it really state of the art, and that's what we've been making sure that we've been doing.
We work very hard to present programs and exhibits and performances that really reflect our diverse community. You know, families have really come to rely on us to provide programs that really educate, inspire, and engage the community.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience La Dolce Vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12 at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Pocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12 at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy a pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3 at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Arts Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories in Art. So tune in for the October 4 episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
A place known for the sounds of concerts is also, for right now, the place to catch the sounds of construction. The Toyota Music Factory is getting new restaurants, fresh design elements, and the Plaza is getting a major overhaul. Let's start there.
It's amazing to see how it's changing so fast and what it's going to become.
It was really just time to refresh and renew the property to, and just create a new experience for our customers.
Here is an idea of what the Plaza will look like by year's end. The stage will be in a new location.
The stage will be right over to this area right here.
We're putting in a brand new double-decker container bar that will service our new stage area.
But also having it upstairs on it where you can sit up and look down over the Plaza.
We've got new conversational areas going in all around the Plaza area, brand new turf area. We're putting a little kids' zone in down over on the other side next to Reservoir.
Surrounding the Plaza will be a lot of new restaurants.
We've got about 11 new tenants going in.
Mama Tried moved to another spot in the same building, making room for.
A real wood smoked barbecue concept called Shoals Barbecue.
We've got Jackson Beer Garden just behind me. And then we have Pistols Cocktail Lounge going above Shoals.
Above the new location of Mama Tried.
We've got Mojito Chino going above, which is a Latin fusion cuisine.
This building will be 100% occupied once these improvements are done.
And then we have the table going in as well, and a couple more that I can't announce just yet.
Crews are also adding aesthetics. Previously, plain walkways have fun new lights. And this walkway will be known as Artist Alley.
It's to showcase with Irving Arts Department, all the local artists here.
There are also new Instagrammable murals all over the property, adding to the visual vibe.
It's just really exciting to see it come together and we're almost finished.
The city of Irving owns the Toyota Music Factory. Its tenant is Brookfield Properties.
People naturally want to know, how is this being paid for?
Right now, the good news is, is that all the money that is being used to pay for this is generated on the property. Brookfield is actually paying for all these improvements upfront, and then we're reimbursing them as this property generates revenue. The sales tax that is generated on site will then reimburse them for the improvements.
How important is this venue to Irving?
Well, it's extremely important to the businesses in the area. You see the Wells Fargo going across the street. You see the Caterpillar just moving their headquarters in. You see the new Christus Healthcare.
What we've been told by people that have recently moved in, this mixed use development with entertainment options, with dining options, is a really critical element for a business looking to relocate.
They want a live, work, play environment, and this is what we provide with this facility.
Even though concerts will always be a big draw.
All right. How do we really, truly tell a story here of more than music?
Teams hope the new attractions will drive more people to realize all that's here. Longtime favorites, as well as all of the new things coming to Irving.
Really, what we're hoping is that people will come to the Toyota Music Factory because it's an exciting place to be.
Couldn't be more excited about the progress and just what's about to come.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast, Jr. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love, and breaking a curse.
It's the legendary uniform worn by America's sweethearts.
Respect and recognition worldwide that comes with wearing this uniform is what makes it iconic.
The renowned uniform is currently on display at the Irving Archives and Museum as part of their Cheer Couture exhibit, which features the original design by Dallas-based Paula Van Wagner and other key items.
Palms and boots that were worn by previous Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, Live in the Game.
The exhibition takes visitors on a fascinating journey through the creation of the uniform designed in 1972.
She created two versions of our uniform. She took those designs, fully fabricated, to text and said, what do you think? And he said, well, I think I need to see it on a body. She was the only one in the room. She said, well, okay, give me a minute. She stepped out, she put the uniform on, she came back, and he said, that's the one I want. So Paula was in fact, the first woman to wear our iconic uniform.
Since then, Paula's design has gone on to shape the identity of cheerleading worldwide. In 2018, the uniform was inducted into the Smithsonian along with a collection of the team's memorabilia, including a rare collector's item.
Can't purchase them anymore, but this is my DCC Barbie. And again, just some of these special things that we hold near and dear.
Former Irving resident Inga Van Wagner is Paula's niece, who reconnected the organization with her aunt after trying out for the team in the spring of 1995.
Inga Van Wagner is from right here in Irving, Texas. She's 24 years old and she's an accounting assistant for an international insurance company.
Before the hit Netflix series about the Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, ICTN caught the audition on camera at the Texas Stadium.
Big Bird was a special purchase. Had to do a little hunting to find one that dimension, that size. I needed it larger so that I would look smaller in proportion. So hunted around a little bit and got lucky and found one.
And captured Inga's momentous moment of making the team.
Contestant number 51, Inga Van Wagner.
In the city that holds a large part of the franchise's history.
The city of Irving is such a gem, and I so appreciate that the rich history of this city is highlighted and those stories are archived here in this museum.
And there are more stories to tell through this exhibit that highlights the pivotal role that Paula played in transforming the stereotypical cheerleader into a professional dance team in striking uniforms.
She's not one for the spotlight. She doesn't like a lot of fanfare, but she does appreciate just how warmly she's been received and recognized and featured in things like this exhibit because this is the story of a lifetime.
We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview Illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
After a temporary close, the Irving Arts Center reopens its doors.
It feels great to be back open. We've been closed for the last three months.
Taking the time to make some long-awaited renovations.
We have a new roof. We have a new HVAC system. We have new lighting on both of the stages that are now both LED, which is going to save a whole lot on our electric bill, and it's a lot more bells and whistles for our clients to use.
Already utilizing the new updates are those attending the monthly Jump Start Stories in Art.
Which is our fun program for stories and art for preschoolers.
Are you in there?
It's a collaboration that we do with the Irving Public Library, and we've been doing it for about 15 years now.
It's a free activity that includes story time followed by a creative take-home art project.
It is a really popular program and we wanted to get the kids back in here and we wanted to get, you know, arts flowing again.
It's just a great family activity and a good thing for the little ones. And, you know, it's a great combination to promote literacy and enjoyment of books along with the hands-on art activity, and we have a different theme every month.
This program is one of the many reasons why the city has invested in preserving the art center for all its benefits to the community.
The art center is really one of the jewels in the crown of Irving. It's, the community uses it. We bring in. We bring in acts that use the space. So it's really important to keep it really state-of-the-art. And that's what we've been making sure that we've been doing.
We work very hard to present programs and exhibits and performances that really reflect our diverse community. You know, families have really come to rely on us to provide programs that really educate, inspire, and engage the community.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience La Dolce Vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay mays, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Arts Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories in Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
A place known for the sounds of concerts is also, for right now, the place to catch the sounds of construction. The Toyota Music Factory is getting new restaurants, fresh design elements, and the plaza is getting a major overhaul. Let's start there.
It's amazing to see how it's changing so fast and what it's going to become. It was really just time to refresh and renew the property to just create a new experience for our customers.
Here is an idea of what the plaza will look like by year's end. The stage will be in a new location.
The stage will be right over to this area right here.
We're putting in a brand-new double-decker container bar that will service our new stage area.
But also having it upstairs on it where you can sit up and look down over the plaza.
We got new conversational areas going in all around the plaza area. Brand-new turf area. We're putting a little kids' zone in down over on the other side next to Reservoir.
Surrounding the plaza will be a lot of new restaurants.
We got about 11 new tenants going in.
Mama Tried moved to another spot in the same building, making room for...
A real wood-smoked barbecue concept called Shoal's Barbecue.
We've got Jackson Beer Garden just behind me. And then we have Pistol's Cocktail Lounge going above Shoal's.
Above the new location of Mama Tried...
We got Mojito Chino going above, which is a Latin fusion cuisine.
This building will be 100% occupied once these improvements are done.
And then we have the table going in as well. And a couple more that I can't announce just yet.
Crews are also adding aesthetics. Previously, plain walkways have fun new lights. And this walkway will be known as Artist Alley.
It's to showcase with Irving Arts Department, all those local artists here.
There are also new Instagrammable murals all over the property, adding to the visual vibe.
It's just really exciting to see it come together, and we're almost finished.
The city of Irving owns the Toyota Music Factory. Its tenant is Brookfield Properties.
People naturally want to know, how is this being paid for?
Uh, right now, the good news is, is that all the money that is being used to pay for this is generated on the property. Brookfield is actually paying for all these improvements upfront. And then we're reimbursing them as this property generates revenue. The sales tax that is generated on-site will then reimburse them for the improvements.
How important is this venue to Irving?
Well, it's extremely important to the businesses in the area. You see the Wells Fargo going across the street. You see the Caterpillar just moving their headquarters in. You see the new Christus Healthcare. What we've been told by people that have recently moved in, this mixed-use development with entertainment options, with dining options, is a really critical element for a business looking to relocate. They want a live-work-play environment, and this is what we provide with this facility.
Even though concerts will always be a big draw...
All right, how do we really, truly tell a story here of more than music?
Teams hope the new attractions will drive more people to realize all that's here. Longtime favorites, as well as all of the new things coming to Irving.
Really, what we're hoping is that people will come to the Toyota Music Factory because it's an exciting place to be.
Couldn't be more excited about the progress and just what's about to come.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast: Junior. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
It's the legendary uniform worn by America's sweethearts.
Respect and recognition worldwide that comes with wearing this uniform is what makes it iconic.
The renowned uniform is currently on display at the Irving Archives and Museum as part of their Cheer Couture exhibit, which features the original design by Dallas-based Paula Van Wagner and other key items.
Palms and boots that were worn by previous Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, live in the game.
The exhibition takes visitors on a fascinating journey through the creation of the uniform designed in 1972.
She created two versions of our uniform. She took those designs, fully fabricated, to text and said, "What do you think?" And he said, "Well, I think I need to see it on a body." She was the only one in the room. She said, "Well, okay, give me a minute." She stepped out, she put the uniform on, she came back, and he said, "That's the one I want." So Paula was, in fact, the first woman to wear our iconic uniform.
Since then, Paula's design has gone on to shape the identity of cheerleading worldwide. In 2018, the uniform was inducted into the Smithsonian along with a collection of the team's memorabilia, including a rare collector's item.
Can't purchase them anymore, but this is my DCC Barbie. And again, just some of these special things that we hold near and dear.
Former Irving resident Inga Van Wagner is Paula's niece, who reconnected the organization with her aunt after trying out for the team in the spring of 1995.
Well, Inga Van Wagner is from right here in Irving, Texas. She's 24 years old, and she's an accounting assistant for an international insurance company.
Before the hit Netflix series about the Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, ICTN caught the audition on camera at the Texas Stadium.
Big Bird was a special purchase. Had to do a little hunting to find one that dimension, that size. I needed it larger so that I would look smaller in proportion. So hunted around a little bit and got lucky and found one.
And captured Inga's momentous moment of making the team.
Contestant number 51, Inga Van Wagner.
In the city that holds a large part of the franchise's history.
The city of Irving is such a gem, and I so appreciate that the rich history of this city is highlighted and those stories are archived here in this museum.
And there are more stories to tell through this exhibit that highlights the pivotal role that Paula played in transforming the stereotypical cheerleader into a professional dance team in striking uniforms.
She's not one for the spotlight. She doesn't like a lot of fanfare. But she does appreciate just how warmly she's been received and recognized and featured in things like this exhibit, because this is the story of a lifetime.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview Illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
After a temporary close, the Irving Arts Center reopens its doors.
It feels great to be back open. We've been closed for the last three months.
Taking the time to make some long-awaited renovations.
We have a new roof. We have a new HVAC system. We have new lighting on both of the stages that are now both LED, which is going to save a whole lot on our electric bill. And it's a lot more bells and whistles for our clients to use.
Already utilizing the new updates are those attending the monthly Jump Start Stories in Art.
Which is our fun program for stories and art for preschoolers. Are you in there? It's a collaboration that we do with the Irving Public Library, and we've been doing it for about 15 years now.
It's a free activity that includes story time, followed by a creative take-home art project.
It is a really popular program, and we wanted to get the kids back in here. And we wanted to get, you know, arts flowing again.
It's just a great family activity and a good thing for the little ones. And, you know, it's a great combination to promote literacy and enjoyment of books along with the hands-on art activity. And we have a different theme every month.
This program is one of the many reasons why the city has invested in preserving the art center for all its benefits to the community.
The art center is really one of the jewels in the crown of Irving. It's, um, the community uses it. We bring in acts that use the space. So it's really important to keep it really state-of-the-art. And that's what we've been making sure that we've been doing.
We work very hard to present programs and exhibits and performances that really reflect our diverse community. You know, families have really come to rely on us to provide programs that really educate, inspire, and engage the community.
The DFW Italian Festival has parked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience La Dolce Vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy pumpkin patch, hay mays, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Arts Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories in Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
A place known for the sounds of concerts is also, for right now, the place to catch the sounds of construction. The Toyota Music Factory is getting new restaurants, fresh design elements, and the plaza is getting a major overhaul. Let's start there.
It's amazing to see how it's changing so fast and what it's going to become. It was really just time to refresh and renew the property to just create a new experience for our customers.
Here is an idea of what the plaza will look like by year's end. The stage will be in a new location.
The stage will be right over to this area right here.
We're putting in a brand-new double-decker container bar that will service our new stage area.
But also having it upstairs on it where you can sit up and look down over the plaza.
We got new conversational areas going in all around the plaza area. Brand-new turf area. We're putting a little kids' zone in down over on the other side next to Reservoir.
Surrounding the plaza will be a lot of new restaurants.
We got about 11 new tenants going in.
Mama Tried moved to another spot in the same building, making room for...
A real wood-smoked barbecue concept called Shoal's Barbecue.
We've got Jackson Beer Garden just behind me. And then we have Pistol's Cocktail Lounge going above Shoal's.
Above the new location of Mama Tried...
We got Mojito Chino going above, which is a Latin fusion cuisine.
This building will be 100% occupied once these improvements are done.
And then we have the table going in as well. And a couple more that I can't announce just yet.
Crews are also adding aesthetics. Previously, plain walkways have fun new lights. And this walkway will be known as Artist Alley.
It's to showcase with Irving Arts Department, all those local artists here.
There are also new Instagrammable murals all over the property, adding to the visual vibe.
It's just really exciting to see it come together, and we're almost finished.
The city of Irving owns the Toyota Music Factory. Its tenant is Brookfield Properties.
People naturally want to know, how is this being paid for?
Uh, right now, the good news is, is that all the money that is being used to pay for this is generated on the property. Brookfield is actually paying for all these improvements upfront. And then we're reimbursing them as this property generates revenue. The sales tax that is generated on-site will then reimburse them for the improvements.
How important is this venue to Irving?
Well, it's extremely important to the businesses in the area. You see the Wells Fargo going across the street. You see the Caterpillar just moving their headquarters in. You see the new Christus Healthcare. What we've been told by people that have recently moved in, this mixed-use development with entertainment options, with dining options, is a really critical element for a business looking to relocate. They want a live-work-play environment, and this is what we provide with this facility.
Even though concerts will always be a big draw...
All right, how do we really, truly tell a story here of more than music?
Teams hope the new attractions will drive more people to realize all that's here. Longtime favorites, as well as all of the new things coming to Irving.
Really, what we're hoping is that people will come to the Toyota Music Factory because it's an exciting place to be.
Couldn't be more excited about the progress and just what's about to come.
Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage during the annual DFW Dragon Boat Kite and Lantern Festival. Experience dragon boat races, cultural performances, Asian cuisine, and much more. This all-day cultural event will take place here at Levy Event Plaza, October 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Welcome fall with an evening of family fun, delicious food, and live music. Grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for Music on Main. This all happens here at Heritage Park on Fridays in October, starting on the 11th at 7 p.m. The Irving Youth Theater presents the classic musical Beauty and the Beast: Junior. Middle and high school students will transport us through this tale of magic, learning to love and breaking a curse.
It's the legendary uniform worn by America's sweethearts.
Respect and recognition worldwide that comes with wearing this uniform is what makes it iconic.
The renowned uniform is currently on display at the Irving Archives and Museum as part of their Cheer Couture exhibit, which features the original design by Dallas-based Paula Van Wagner and other key items.
Palms and boots that were worn by previous Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, live in the game.
The exhibition takes visitors on a fascinating journey through the creation of the uniform designed in 1972.
She created two versions of our uniform. She took those designs, fully fabricated, to text and said, "What do you think?" And he said, "Well, I think I need to see it on a body." She was the only one in the room. She said, "Well, okay, give me a minute." She stepped out, she put the uniform on, she came back, and he said, "That's the one I want." So Paula was, in fact, the first woman to wear our iconic uniform.
Since then, Paula's design has gone on to shape the identity of cheerleading worldwide. In 2018, the uniform was inducted into the Smithsonian along with a collection of the team's memorabilia, including a rare collector's item.
Can't purchase them anymore, but this is my DCC Barbie. And again, just some of these special things that we hold near and dear.
Former Irving resident Inga Van Wagner is Paula's niece, who reconnected the organization with her aunt after trying out for the team in the spring of 1995.
Well, Inga Van Wagner is from right here in Irving, Texas. She's 24 years old, and she's an accounting assistant for an international insurance company. She's 24 years old, and she's an accounting assistant for an international insurance company.
Before the hit Netflix series about the Dallas Cowboys cheerleaders, ICTN caught the audition on camera at the Texas Stadium.
Big Bird was a special purchase. Had to do a little hunting to find one that dimension, that size. I needed it larger so that I would look smaller in proportion. So hunted around a little bit and got lucky and found one.
And captured Inga's momentous moment of making the team.
Contestant number 51, Inga Van Wagner.
In the city that holds a large part of the franchise's history.
The city of Irving is such a gem, and I so appreciate that the rich history of this city is highlighted, and those stories are archived here in this museum.
And there are more stories to tell through this exhibit that highlights the pivotal role that Paula played in transforming the stereotypical cheerleader into a professional dance team in striking uniforms.
She's not one for the spotlight. She doesn't like a lot of fanfare, but she does appreciate just how warmly she's been received and recognized and featured in things like this exhibit, because this is the story of a lifetime.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. We hope you'll join us on the next City Source. The Paris Olympics are over, but the competitions continue for some local seniors. See all of the fun at the Golden Sneaker Games. And we will preview Illuminate Irving as the Irving Police Department's Family Advocacy Center marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's at 6:00 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/TheCityOfIrving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
After a temporary close, the Irving Art Center reopens its doors.
It feels great to be back open. We've been closed for the last three months.
Taking the time to make some long-awaited renovations.
We have a new roof. We have a new HVAC system. We have new lighting on both of the stages that are now both LED, which is going to save a whole lot on our electric bill, and it's a lot more bells and whistles for our clients to use.
Already utilizing the new updates are those attending the monthly Jump Start Stories and Art.
Which is our fun program for Stories and Art for Preschoolers.
Are you in there?
It's a collaboration that we do with the Irving Public Library, and we've been doing it for about 15 years now.
It's a free activity that includes story time followed by a creative take-home art project.
It is a really popular program, and we wanted to get the kids back in here, and we wanted to get, you know, arts flowing again.
It's just a great family activity and a good thing for the little ones. And, you know, it's a great combination to promote literacy and enjoyment of books along with the hands-on art activity, and we have a different theme every month.
This program is one of the many reasons why the city has invested in preserving the art center for all its benefits to the community.
The art center is really one of the jewels in the crown of Irving. It's, um, the community uses it. We bring in acts that use the space. So it's really important to keep it really state-of-the-art, and that's what we've been making sure that we've been doing.
We work very hard to present programs and exhibits and performances that really reflect our diverse community. You know, families have really come to rely on us to provide programs that really educate, inspire, and engage the community.
The DFW Italian Festival has perked its gondola here in Irving. Celebrate Italy's rich heritage with authentic food, wine tasting, live performances, family-friendly fun, and much more. Experience la dolce vita here at Levy Event Plaza, October 12th at noon. Spooky season is here. Bring your friends and family and join us for a drive-in movie classic, Hocus Pocus. Decorate your own pumpkin from our onsite pumpkin patch during the screening. Quit witching around and come down to Mustang Park, October 12th at 6:00 p.m. Carve out some fun at the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Patch Event hosted by the Animal Connection Experience. Enjoy a pumpkin patch, hay maze, pony rides, and many more exciting fall activities. Harvest memories every weekend in October through November 3rd at the Animal Experience at Fritz Park.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we attend Viva Irving Cares, the annual gala benefiting families in need. And we'll learn about the newest updates at the Irving Art Center while sitting in on Jump Start Stories and Art. So tune in for the October 4th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
A place known for the sounds of concerts is also, for right now, the place to catch the sounds of construction. The Toyota Music Factory is getting new restaurants, fresh design elements, and the plaza is getting a major overhaul. Let's start there.
It's amazing to see how it's changing so fast and what it's going to become. It was really just time to refresh and renew the properties and just create a new experience for our customers.
Here is an idea of what the plaza will look like by year's end. The stage will be in a new location.
The stage will be right over to this area right here.
We're putting in a brand-new double-decker container bar that will service our new stage area.
But also having it upstairs on it where you can sit up and look down over the plazas.
We got new conversational areas going in all around the plaza area. Brand-new turf area. We're putting a little kid's zone in down over on the other side next to Reservoir.
Surrounding the plaza will be a lot of new restaurants.
We got about 11 new tenants going in.
Mama Tried moved to another spot in the same building, making room for...
A real woodsmoke barbecue concept called Shoals Barbecue.
We've got Jackson Beer Garden just behind me, and then we have Pistol's Cocktail Lounge going above Shoals.
Above the new location of Mama Tried...
We got Mojito Chino going above, which is a Lat infusion cuisine.
This building will be 100% occupied once these improvements are done.
And then we have the table going in as well, and a couple more that I can't announce just yet.
Crews are also adding aesthetics. Previously plain walkways have fun new lights, and this walkway will be known as Artist Alley.
It's to showcase with Irving Arts Department, all the local artists here.
There are also new Instagrammable murals all over the property adding to the visual vibe.
It's just really exciting to see it come together, and we're almost finished.
The city of Irving owns the Toyota Music Factory. Its tenant is Brookfield Properties.
People naturally want to know, how is this being paid for?
Uh, right now, the good news is, is that...